Good evening, everyone. I'm calling the October 28th Land Use, Hillsdale Land Use Board to order. We'll begin with our open public meeting statement read by our Deputy Secretary, Tanya, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. The notice of this meeting was published in two newspapers according to law, and time and place of this meeting have been posted in a prominent location in Borough Hall. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, on a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tanya, when you're ready, we'll have our board roll call.
Chair, Will McKeats?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riordan?
Here.
Secretary Raymond?
Sorry, here.
Mr. Alter?
Here.
Mr. Friedman?
Here.
Mr. Greif?
Here.
Dr. Weinberg?
Here.
Mr. Hip?
Here.
Council liaison Chohimiu?
Here.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Here.
Board Attorney, Ms. Cassetta?
Here.
Board Engineer, Mr. Satiel?
Here.
And Board Planner, Mr. Behrens?
Okay, thank you.
The audio was working.
Thank you, everyone. We welcome the public here. For those of you that haven't been here before, we ask you just to silence your phones and please don't talk because we're recording. For people at home who can't hear, and we can hear you when you speak, we will also, you'll have a chance to speak, and when you come up, you'll address the board, and we'll ask you to identify yourself with your name and your address. So, thank you for being here tonight. So, at this time, we're going to open the meeting to the public. This is only for items or issues then that are not being heard tonight on our agenda. Is there anyone that would like to address the board about anything that's not listed on our agenda for this evening? Seeing none, I'll close the meeting to the public. Oh, Rick, right in my face, sorry. Come on up.
Richard Cervino, 64 West Dell Avenue. If this is an item on the agenda, but I'm just wondering if it's complete. The, um, there is one plan sheet posted.
Well, when, no, when we get to that, you gotta wait. You know how it works. Thank you, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so now we'll move on to approve the board invoices. First, we have CSG law. Five invoices for a total of $1,600, $610.50. Do I have a motion?
Meredith, what was that one for?
This is CSG. This is Mark Liebman's firm. Do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mayor Scheinfield, second.
Second.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Chair, Will McKeats?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riordan?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greif?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Council liaison Chohimiu?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Moving on to Birch Associates, Inc., we have a $560 invoice. Do I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay, Scott Raymond, Dr. Weinberg.
Chair, Will McKeats?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riordan?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greif?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Council liaison Chohimiu?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. An invoice from Harwood Lloyd, LLC, $2,700, sorry, $2,571.50. Do I have a motion?
Motion, second.
Did you get that?
Chair, Will McKeats?
I shouldn't say.
You weren't here.
I didn't see you.
You're not, yeah. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Chair, Will McKeats?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riordan?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greif?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Hip? Oh, sorry. Because we have a full quorum, I'm not going to be calling Mr. Hip. Council liaison Chohimiu?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Yes.
Motion's passed.
Thank you, Tanya. Moving on to our minutes from October 9, 2025, for those members that are eligible to vote, please review, and I'll take a motion.
Motion.
Mr. Alter?
Second.
And they were excellent, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, Will McKeats?
Yes.
Vice Chair Riordan?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Abstain.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greif?
Yes.
Dr. Weinberg?
Abstain.
Council liaison Chohimiu?
Yes.
Mayor Scheinfield?
Abstain.
Motion's passed.
Thank you. Before we move on to our hearing, we have to, some members have to recuse themselves from this hearing, and we have a member that will come up to the dais, so just give us a moment to prepare. Thank you. And we'll move on to PZ 725 block, 1208 lot 1, 560 Paramount Avenue, Hillsdale South Storage Site Plan. Hello, Mr. Tuvell.
Okay, just let me know when you're ready.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're ready.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Jason Tuvell, attorney for the applicants. So, this is, I believe, hearing number four on this matter. You've heard our case in chief. At the last meeting, I just wanted to sort of summarize where we are from a relief perspective. We did remove the sign variances that were initially requested, so the sign that is located on the southern side will be lowered to comply with the height requirement in the ordinance, and we also agreed to remove in its entirety the sign on the westerly side of the property. So, that relief has been eliminated from the application. I also wanted to make sure it was clear, too, because this was back and forth during the testimony, that we will also eliminate the design waiver related to the drive aisle width on the vehicular storage lot, and I spoke to Mr. Satiel today about that as well. So, the striping will be modified on that plan, and there will be no waiver requested with respect to that item of relief either. So, I just wanted the board to be clear that we, that waiver has been eliminated based on the back and forth with the applicant at the last, at the last meeting, and the sign variances have also been eliminated from the application. I know Mr. Magaleta had started presenting his case with his first fact witness. I don't think we got through that because things took a little, a little while, so I'll turn it back over to him, let him continue with his case, and we'll go from there.
Just clarification. Which exception are you withdrawing, the drive aisle width or the driveway width?
Right, so there's, so it's on, it's 310 dish 104 access drives, a driveway should not be less than 12 feet for ingress and egress alone, and 24 feet for both ingress and egress, and also the issue of 24 feet versus 22 feet. Am I correct about that? Just checking with my professionals. Yes, okay. So, those, those two, which are pretty much centered around the same thing, have been eliminated.
Does that mean there's one driveway or still two driveways?
No, there's still two driveways.
Okay.
Yeah.
And they're both between 4 feet wide?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right.
I should shame on me. Frank Magalena, on behalf of the objective St. John the Baptist Church and also the Roman Catholic Diocese of Newark. So, yeah, Mr. Tuvell was correct. Right now, we're in the middle of my, my only, one and only fact witness, Father Peter.
That's your only witness?
Only fact witness. I also have, as an expert as well.
Okay.
So, I would like to have Father Peter come back up.
Okay.
That's the last time we presented four photographs, and he was in the middle of the first video.
Father Peter, can you approach the microphone for one moment? We'd like you to acknowledge that you're still under oath. We swore you went at the last meeting.
I'm ready.
If you would just acknowledge that you remain under oath from the last hearing before this board?
Yes.
Thank you.
I am.
Yeah, please.
So, our attorney also reviewed the video and has a recommendation for how to proceed at this point.
So, there, there were multiple videos. I had suggested to Mr. Magaleta that they simply show still images from the various videos and have the Monsignor testify to what is being shown. Mr. Magaleta did advise me that they would like to play the videos. So, I think maybe it would be helpful for you to give an overview of what they show and let the board determine whether they should be played.
Well, some of the videos will play, other videos, we, Monsignor's gonna, we will fast forward to the part where he measures the water depth, and that'll be it. I think I indicated in my email to you which those were. As far as the other videos, they show the extent of the, of the water, the flow, and how it's impacting the site, and other videos showing truck maneuvering on church property, another one shows, you'll see it. But that's really, we'll freeze a couple of these. We're not gonna play all the videos, so just so we're clear on that, just a few of them. Can we proceed with the OS?
Well, I, I think it should be up to the board because I did review them, but I did not communicate with the board about them.
Okay.
Because I don't, I don't feel it's my place to stop you from playing them. I gave you my opinion.
Right.
I think the board should discuss it.
Mr. Tuvell's allowed to object if he finds it objectionable?
Yeah, and the order will be off.
He can't give testimony.
Well, he can authenticate.
Okay.
All right. Well, he's, he's taken all the videos. I can tell you that. I can represent to the board that he's taken every single video, and that's it.
So, you can go ahead, Monsignor. I would just ask you not to add any extra commentary. Just authenticate the videos, tell the board and the public what they show, and leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we were in the middle of the first video, which I think is marked OS 5, oh, sorry, 05 for identification. I'll let the board members.
Yeah, we need to just rearrange ourselves.
Yeah, you can get started, but don't play it. Get it up on the screen, please.
And I will need to turn off the, the audio.
Today is July 14, 2025.
Right now, I'm turning off. Okay.
All right. So, this, go ahead, this is, this is, oh, what, go ahead. 05. This is, this is 05 for identification. And you take measurement at the time mark is 1, 1 minute 18 seconds, you take measurement. But what exactly, you can stop it for a second there, please. Just stop the audio, the video, I mean. If you hit the spacebar, it stops it right away. You have to try and find that switch. What is this, what is this location that's being, that you videotaped? What is it?
So, this is, once again, night of July 14. That night had only about three and a half inches of rain. The entire area flooded, and the issue with this flooding, even with, after such a not huge rain.
Well, where are you standing when you're taking this video? Where you recorded it? Where were you?
I actually went and measured it this, this evening, this afternoon. I'm standing by the, during lawnmowers in that area.
Are you actually in the road prospect? Are you standing in the middle of the road?
Yes.
Okay.
And that little car there on the, little bit that you can see, that's the parish truck. I couldn't drive any further because the water was so deep.
And in the background is, is the church, St. John Baptist Church, the structure, correct?
Exactly.
Okay. All right, so then, please, could you go forward to 18?
So, at that point, I have about 392 feet from the driveway of St. John the Baptist.
Okay, you measured that yourself?
Yes.
How did you measure it?
With one of those measuring devices that you measure the feet.
On a wheel?
Yeah, the wheel.
Okay, on a wheel. All right, thank you. All right, so please continue.
So, this is the, as I, I need to say that it was really a scary night for us.
Okay, I have that comment.
Okay, no comments. So, I took two of these walks. One was at 9:41 PM, the other was at 10, 10:13 PM. And these are just brief, this is just a brief, brief footage from what happened at night on, on Prospect.
Could you go fast forward to 1 minute 18 seconds, please?
I just want to add that the board's being very lenient because this isn't a hearing about flooding, so we're not trying to stop the testimony. There's just legal parameters that we can hear and consider.
Okay, so at this point, where were you measuring the, the water depth? What, what part of the property was this?
This is on Prospect, only about in the area of doing lawnmowers, and further up is the west of Banana. This was.
And what did the, what was the depth of the water at that point?
That point, about five feet, five inches, yeah.
Okay, not five feet, five inches, thank you. All right, is there anything further about this video you want to tell the, the board? Is there anything more about this video you want to tell the board about it?
No, at the end of the video, I arrived to the video number two, so.
Okay, so why don't we stop this, go to number two, and video number two, can we mark that as 06 for identification? Hold on, don't, don't play it yet, please. Is that okay? 06?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Father, proceed. So, what was, now, when was this taken as well? You took this, correct?
Yes, I did.
And when was it taken, the time?
So, this was right in the time. I started 9:41 or so, so there was shortly after, and this actually shows what, what is happening on Prospect Place during this flooding.
All right, can you play it, please?
Yeah.
All right, and this again, this is you're standing in Prospect?
Yes, I'm walking down Prospect.
You're walking south on Prospect?
Yes, and towards the, the Church of St. John the Baptist.
That's the church in the background, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what's happening in the middle of the screen right there? Father, would you direct your attention to the screen, please? What's, what's happening? Well?
So, I would direct the attention of the board and everybody at this very important area right here, where this whole street should be draining.
Yes.
And instead of draining, the water is pumping like a geyser up and back into Prospect Place.
You're indicating where the, where the, the water is bubbling up? You're saying it's coming up?
Right here.
Okay, thank you. All right, please continue. Anything else?
I arrived to a drainage that is absolutely not functioning.
All right, so again, this is.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Monsignor?
I arrived to the area of a drainage there on the corner, and the drainage stopped working.
And that's your observation. You are not, in fact, an expert in drainage.
No, but you can say.
Stop right there, please. Okay, and then you're, again, you're taking the measurement of the water, of the water level?
Yes.
And what, what is the water level?
So, in that, in that video, it starts about 11 inches and then gets. So in that video, it starts about 11 inches and then gets deeper. Sorry for this location, we're hoping to have a longer cable here, but that's. So if there would be darker here, you would be able to see the drainage. Now we don't, but this is about 11 inches deep and I'm standing right over a drain that is totally not functioning.
So the water's not draining, the water's not draining from there?
Not at all.
From your observation?
From this video.
Okay.
I was there, standing over it.
Okay. Okay, that's for OS five, next is OS seven, that's, now there's three instances here where you take measure, where you measure the water depth, so once you hit play.
Should it be the still pictures?
You're gonna freeze it, yes, at that point.
Because we only said two videos and then the rest are still pictures.
No, I didn't say two videos, I think it was, let's see, it's one, two, there's three videos, well, three videos, well, one, two.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go crazy.
Yeah, I think.
Is this the last video?
No, the videos, this is only one side we're talking.
Last video I'm calling, sorry.
On measurement, I'm measuring the flood.
You know, we can decide how many we want to see, so this is for the board's identification, so you don't need to argue about it. But did you agree to?
I didn't agree to anything.
Right.
I made a suggestion, but I think.
And I'm trying to follow that suggestion, I am, yeah.
Generally speaking, I think the point is being made that the Monsignor has observed flooding, that he observed the drains in his opinion not working. I'm not sure how many more videos the board needs to see to understand the point that he's making, probably none.
No, the question, I'm sorry, but the question is the height of the flooding, that's really what he's also trying to demonstrate, the extent of it, the severity of it, but.
And the other, when we get to those, in the video number four, I arrived to the area of the flooding instruction there, the water is 16 inches deep. But what is important in video six is there we can really see how this water, like a river, is moving on the property of St. John the Baptist.
Part of it's showing how the water flows onto his property, the church property.
So the water is not just sitting there.
So it's up to the board, obviously, as to what you want to see.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
I just wanted, because I just, sorry, I just want to object on the record, so all these videos basically have the same objection issues. One is relevance, they don't pertain to the site plan at all. Two, we could all take judicial notice that this is a flood area because we have to get flood hazard area verification, an individual permit to build here. So we can all take judicial notice that it's a flood area. The other issue is foundation. There's no, there's nothing here because this is just fact testimony, you can, or drains clogged, or there are issues upstreaming. There's no foundation as to what is actually occurring, other than that water is being seen. We don't know the circumstances around the water, we don't know the rainfall, I mean, there's just, we can keep watching these things, but there's no foundation to really allege anything that's being alleged because the witness is not an expert. So to me, you can allow them in because I don't want to prejudice the applicant, but to me, they should be given almost no weight based on relevance and having no foundation. And I leave it up to the board if you want to see more, but they just keep showing the same thing, which is just water in the street.
I'm fairly confident the board understands that although we empathize with the flooding that happens on this site, this is not something that we leave any jurisdiction over or that we're facing here tonight in our decision. So I personally understand that, I feel the other members do too. Does anyone want to give an opinion on that they'd like to see more or hear more?
May I? Just for, I mean, part of the site application is they're saying that they're decreasing the previous coverage and they're improving the water, stormwater management, I think that goes, that goes to show, well, are you really going to improve it so much that, what you see here, is your plan going to improve and stop something like this from happening in these events?
Well, I think that's for engineers to answer.
That's also not the standard, the standard is whether or not we comply with the stormwater management ordinance of the municipality and in another form, the jurisdiction of the DEP. The standard is not whether we're gonna cure the problem.
I'm not suggesting that.
So the standard is, and I'm sure you're having an expert talk about technical issues, which is fine, but I don't see how this testimony indicates whether or not, or even opines or gives any weight or relevance to how we don't either comply or don't comply with the stormwater management. I don't, for example, there was, there was testimony about, well, the drainage is not working. How do we know that? It's all just, it's all just an observation.
That's right, it's a visual observation.
Okay, that is something that the board can discuss when it's time for us to think about this application with possible conditions, so that is something we can possibly consider. But at this time, is there anyone from the board that feels a need to see more video or pictures?
I would ask, our additional videos would show different, different facts that this board should assess with respect to its overall review of the site plan, such as the damage to the church downstream from these floodwaters. These, I think these first three or four, even six videos, you don't have to listen, you have to look at, but I think if you look at video number nine, for certain that is important. And number 10 has nothing to do with flooding, has to do with use of the property by trucks and number 11 has to do with traffic.
Mr. Magletta, you understand what the board has to vote on at this hearing?
Yes.
What is that?
You look at the site plan, whether or not it complies with the redevelopment.
Okay, so you see this as relevant to what we're voting on?
Yes.
So show me a video or picture that's exactly relevant to what we're voting on, please.
So number eight, we can skip that, how the waters, stream waters, both from Prospect and from Brook meet on our property. But number nine is very relevant, very, very relevant to this application because we are putting cars and commercial vehicles into floodway. And I'm gonna show you what happened with the floodway during this, during this rainstorm, which is only about three inches, when the big bundles of wood were floating all the way down past Scott Brook and.
Mr. Magletta, I think you're gonna have to test it, I think you're gonna have to narrate us through this.
Yeah, and also.
Because it's understandable that the church is concerned about the flooding and upset about it.
Right.
You know, unfortunately, this is, this is not something before the board, so we, you know.
No, this is, this is not about.
Hold on, but, but the applicant's engineer said, here's what we're doing to improve the stormwater management.
So show us a picture related to that, please, and only that? Thank you.
So we do have also police report from the following day, all this material from the site.
I think, I think, yeah.
How does what happened in over the summer have any indication on what's on our plans?
Because it has.
I have no idea how that's relevant. If Mr. Magletta wants to provide evidence that our plan has any sort of flaws, which we don't think it does, but if he wants to attempt to do that, that's just right. But I don't understand how something that occurred over the summer or whenever has any relevance on our plans.
Now, that's your construction material there, that's gonna be in this video.
Self-storage building has not been built, that's what we're looking at.
Okay, I'm gonna ask my attorney to make a decision on that.
I agree, none of this appears to be relevant to the issue of whether the site plan complies with the applicable ordinances. The flooding, it's, it's never been kept a secret that this is in a flood area, the applicant has obtained a DEP permit, has submitted it to the board.
Applicant also violated our property.
Hold on, can you finish, please? That's all outside of the board's jurisdiction and as Mr. Tuval said, something that happened over the summer really has no bearing on a project that hasn't been constructed yet.
Part of the, part of the, Mr. Satiel's report says that you have to make sure that the stormwater, stormwater system can handle the flows.
That is, that we're willing to see a photo of, not a police report, nothing else. So can you please pick the photo or video that we'll see?
Well, I think, I think video number nine is important, it shows the, that the consequence of the flood on the property as well as the, how, how, how the upstream construction will impact my client's properties. Can we play the number nine? It's 15 seconds long.
It's fine.
Can we mark that O six, I'm sorry, O eight?
O eight.
Can you describe what this is?
So this is on left, our church, this is the Brook, day after the flooding. The, from the floodway area, this is all the construction material from the site, big bundles damaging our property, being carried down Brook.
Monsignor.
So.
Where are you suggesting the materials came from?
From the site.
From the site that's the subject of this application?
From the exactly, yes. Yeah, they came from the area where we are planning in this application to place commercial industrial vehicles and this area there will be getting a beautiful car wash with every flooding, with our stuff, with all the pesticides on our property. But this, this bundle of wood and other construction material were carried exactly from the area where there is a parking lot.
Again, once again, I object, there's nothing within the jurisdiction of this board that's been shown. I understand that Monsignor is upset with what occurs in the past, he has every right to be upset with those things, if things happen that shouldn't have happened, or if flooding issue in general, I think everybody sympathizes with that. But I don't think it has anything to do with the application that's before the board.
Except that, what's, thank you, except that, as a, as a, as a board pointed out, you can make conditions, when you see what the impact of the flooding is and the impact of upstream, what happens, you can make conditions, if possible, if you approve it and say, well, you can't allow this to happen.
We understand that, we make conditions on every application, so.
That's why I'm saying it is relevant for that purpose, so that's why it's relevant.
We probably would be more effective if we started asking questions right now of this witness, rather than watch the videos, because I'm sure the board already has some questions based on what we've seen.
Of course, I think it's a good time for it right now.
The next two videos have absolutely nothing to do with flooding.
That's why it's a good time to ask about that now.
Yeah, yes, I would like to move on to questions, so.
Go ahead.
So that would mean the videos are done?
Yes.
Those videos are done, there's other additional videos.
Safety.
They're applying more videos.
The flooding videos are done. The flood, the flooding videos are done.
Is that what we agreed to?
We have two brief videos that describe what is happening on the property now.
I think maybe Mr. Magletta could tell the board what the other two videos show.
Sure. The, the other video, video number 10, shows trucks going onto the church property to turn around. These are not church truck, truck vehicles, these are vehicles off-site. I don't think they're from, either from, well, Monsignor can tell you where it's from, but it has nothing to do with my client's property. So his property is being used as a truck deposit, turnaround spot, and the video shows that, as opposed to him simply telling you, you can see it in this one minute video.
And can you explain for the board how you believe that's relevant to the site plan application?
Because it, because the site plan, the redevelopment plan says that, that trucks should not be allowed in the Valley Street area, Valley Street, to use Valley Street. And also, you shouldn't be using the, the church property for this industrial, commercial use. So it is relevant to say you have some kind of control, some kind of mechanism on how these vehicles are used. And I think that they can, the applicant can control how property, how vehicles come and go on its property, which direction they can go.
Would it accomplish the same purpose to simply request that the board consider a condition on any approval granted, requiring the applicant to police its own construction personnel and vehicles?
That would, that would ultimately serve the purpose, yes, but the videos I think are instructive, but if you don't want to see it, I understand.
They're very, very important to see because that's what is happening on the property.
But just to be clear, what we're talking about.
Wait, we need the mic.
Sorry, what we're talking about again is irrelevant. We're talking about presumptive violations of a site plan or a zoning ordinance. That's what enforcement is for. So anybody, anybody driving down a street can violate a traffic law. Somebody can run a stop sign, somebody can go into a property that's not theirs, that happens all the time.
No, this is.
No, 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 hold on a second. So I understand that the church is maybe worried about vehicles in general, maybe that are in the area, using their property as a turnaround. To me, that's a merit council issue. Perhaps you want to put different MUTCD signage on the street that prevents that. Perhaps you want to do other things infrastructure-wise to the, to the town roads or the borough roads to deal with that. Again, it has nothing to do with the application. What we're doing is we're speculating that going forward, there's gonna be some violation of a zoning ordinance, a site plan ordinance, a traffic issue. This is, I'll let the, it's up to the board if they want, if you want to let it play, that's fine, but I'm just saying, in addition to that, the case law is also clear that when you have a permitted use under the land use law, off-site traffic can't be considered by the board as an issue. So I could give you that citation also, it's Duncan Donuts versus South Brunswick Township or North Brunswick Township, excuse me, it's a case that's been around for a very long time. So again, I understand the frustration with many things that are going out there, I would totally sympathize with that, any property owner would if they had some condition going on in their site that they didn't like, but that has nothing to do with the project. But again, I leave it to the board, but I have to put these objections on the record.
And I understand he has to put those objections, but this is not really a vehicle, this is a tractor trailer that's on the property, making, making a roundabout turnaround there. I think it's something that the board should see and say how it's significant, is how the church's property is being misused. I think it's important.
I think the issue here is also.
Okay, our attorney's going to answer, no one else needs to speak.
I think, again, the board gets the message, I don't think they need to see a video to understand the impact of a truck entering the church property when it's not supposed to be. I don't think that there's a need for them to see it.
I think the point is that there is no other spot right now, the way this is being built and the way the cars are parked, for vehicles, bigger vehicles to turn around, there is no other spot. And you will see it on the pictures, how those streets look like during the day and when our funerals are coming in, when our weddings are coming in, and how people are being endangered by that situation. So there is no other place right now for these big vehicles to turn around, because they used to turn around in this parking area that was, that was empty. Now the construction workers are parking there. So they are using the church parking area, the entire back.
How is this relevant?
Okay.
Because we are building 800 unit storage facility and people will be coming and bringing their stuff, trucks and big vehicles. So that's why, that's why it's relevant.
That is certainly not relevant because that's a separate project that's under construction, that has no relevance to the site plan that's before the board, this is important.
Okay, so I would like us to be able to question the Monsignor at this time and we, if the board has questions about what you just said, we can equally ask questions about that concern. So let's move on to questions at this time. Can you please come forward, because we want to ask you possibly as a witness, some fact questions at this time? So Chris or Tom, is there any questions that you have about anything you heard?
I think the issues are fairly self-explanatory at this point, I understand the experience.
Mike?
At this point, I think I understand the concerns and I think one of the possible solutions to addressing those is our, you know, reasonable conditions.
Yes.
As this work.
Yes, I agree, I think the board all understands that. Board, do you have questions for this fact? Does anyone want to ask a question? So we open to the public?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, sorry, Chris.
It's okay.
You were quiet.
One thing the board should keep in mind, of course, is that in the past, that, this location is controlled by the basketball gates at the Wicker Lake Dam. Now, while I, I've been in that 50 years, I've seen lots of floods, so a lot has to do with the control of those basketball gates during the timing of the flooding, during the timing of the, of the pressing of the river, et cetera. I don't expect the Monsignor to know, position the basketball gates immediately before he took the photographs, et cetera. And I certainly can't find what was going on at the time either. So it's a little, it's a little difficult to, to sort of prophesize what was going on out here at the time. I admit, there was a rainstorm, yes, you see that in the records, but what was going on in the Wicker Lake Dam, what was happening upstream in the Wicker Lake Dam, I don't know, how much water was in the Wicker Lake at the time, the precipitation occurred, was the storage being used up, was the water, was it opened, opened the gates? I can't, so there's a lot, there's a lot of fluid in the water, so I'm, that's all I can say.
Thanks, Chris. Any board, any questions? Okay. So at this time, we're gonna open the meeting to the public who have questions about what they saw, keeping in mind what the board's role is. This is not a project that it's already been, an agreement has already been signed on this project, it's not a project the board can stop, we don't have the legal authority to stop it. We have two items that we were, that we were voting on and we can put some conditions possibly in the site plan, correct, Allison? Can you just maybe inform the public about what we're doing here tonight?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say the board can't stop it, I would say the board's authority is very limited. is very limited. You're here to decide whether this plan complies with all of the applicable ordinances and whether the applicant has met the burden of proof for the few items of relief remaining that they're requesting.
May I answer that? I mean, I understand and the board is constrained, but at the same time, the board has the power to act if it sees any safety concerns.
Yes, absolutely.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Absolutely. And that the board's very committed to whatever we can do to make the safest possible project. It's just, you know, I don't know if the public knows that this is an agreement that was signed with the council already.
Right. No, I understand and I appreciate that. I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So members of the public, you can come up. You're limited to three minutes. If you have a question about this, for this applicant, about what you saw or heard.
So am I done?
Well, we're seeing if anyone wants to ask any questions about what you showed.
Madam Chair, there's still some additional photographs we're going to show. So.
And it's all-
Why don't you leave? Where are they? Are they only online?
No, they're up there.
All issues of safety.
I don't see the board having, I don't know that the board feels they need to see them. So let me ask the board, would you like to see the additional photographs?
Not formative flooding.
They're not flooding-based. That's about traffic.
What's the content? Traffic?
It's about traffic, yes.
And safety.
I feel like no one should be questioning the Monsignor until they're done with what they're using.
Yeah, I thought we were finished. I thought he was finished.
I know. That's why I interjected. I appreciate.
I don't want to do this.
Okay, so-
No piecemeal, right? Thank you.
We just want to know the entirety of what you want to bring. So we're not going piece by piece and we know when we're ready to ask questions. So yes, we'll see a few traffic photos. But you, I would like you to leave the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So Monsignor, last time we were here, you had a couple, actually four photographs that you, that we marked for identification. Do you have an additional photograph you brought with you today?
Yes.
Yes. Who took those photographs?
I did.
Except for the Google Maps, you took the photographs, right?
Yes.
And you had them blown up for-
So before we go into the pictures, as we're discussing some of the issues, and once again, the principal of St. John's Academy is here, some parents representing the school. I just wanted to, this was our image and I didn't mark it in any way because that's how we presented it last time.
And that was OS1, correct, on the back?
That's, oh, yeah.
Okay. So on the right, you have another, an additional photograph.
So this is now the property of St. John the Baptist.
You've outlined that with the red line, red marker?
Yes.
Okay. Can I mark this O9 for identification? Yes.
Now, hold on.
Google Maps, yeah.
So you just hand drew a red line, what you assumed to be the property boundaries without any site map?
Yeah, that's based on our documentation. Yeah, but we can, you can-
Is it based upon your knowledge of what the church property is?
Yes. I'm there for five years. So this is-
Again, the board gave it away. It wants to-
Those lines are your estimation of the church property boundaries?
Yeah, but we can provide the original documentation and everything.
Well, I think, I think we could just mark it with the understanding that this is his estimation.
Yes.
It's not based on any-
Right. No, engineer did not do this. Survey did not do this. He did this. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for that clarification. O9, is that acceptable? That's the next one. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Monsignor.
So we discussed various issues and one that we obviously wanted to bring up is the issue of safety, extremely important to us because the development is not in the final stage yet. People have not moved into the apartments yet. But Valley Street already became like a highway. Obviously, people traveling down Patterson will be here at this intersection with lights and everything else. So every day now, we see people coming from the development area down through our Valley Street and through the parking lot of St. John's Academy, seriously endangering children and during the difficult, different times of the day. The pictures that I'm going to show is our pictures because obviously we have, the plan is to build the entrance and loading area of the, of the storage facility right at this intersection, right here, where Prospect Street meets Valley Street. I wanted to show you the video number 11, which is from a recent funeral that happened a couple of days ago and what happened at that intersection. This is, it was not that large funeral, about 60 people. There was a total confusion there. People are trying to get into the, on the Valley Street, cars are double-packed. Prospect now along our property, all parked. The traffic expert testified that it's very, very easy because all people from this parking area will be going up Prospect and then connecting on Patterson. That's not what we see. And one of the reasons why it's not happening is because Prospect in this area is constantly, and there are some board members here who can testify to it because we see it every day. You see what is happening on Prospect and on that-
Excuse me. Does the board want to see video 11? It shows the traffic.
I recommend that you do not.
Okay.
Also, Mr., it's constantly what? What is Prospect Place?
You will see it. Prospect Place, there is, at times, you cannot pass it because there are construction vehicles, there are landscaping vehicles, and they are cutting now from here through Valley Street on Orchard Street, right by our school, and through New Street. And many vehicles are going through our parking area where all times of the day, and I testified last time that we have after school till about 6 o'clock. And when those kids leave, we have CYO at times till 8, 9 o'clock in the evening. So there are constantly children on this, on this property and cars are flying there. So obviously, what is happening here, the number of vehicles that we are bringing in and the traffic pattern from here is, I think, very, very important. So those three pictures, those pictures are from three different days, just randomly, just that you see how the area where the planned entrance and the loading for the storage facility looks like.
Have you established what day that picture was taken and what time of day it was?
I have that.
Which pic? This picture?
Yeah. I mean, I know the videos we did, but to be exact.
No, I have other pictures. I have pictures and I have dates and times exactly. So.
I'm just talking about the video.
He's looking for the date stamp on the satellite image.
When were these, the dates, well, dates with-
This was taken about 10 o'clock yesterday, printed yesterday evening and this morning.
When was the aerial photo taken?
Do you know when that photograph was taken on Google Earth? I'm sorry, Google Maps? If you don't-
I don't, but it can be.
Okay.
Verified, obviously.
Is the board concerned because there's no traffic there? I mean, that's, that's indicative of what Monsignor is testifying to, but it just shows the open streets. With that, can you show the photographs that you took?
Yes.
Please.
This is an area that's also not unfamiliar to the board. I know, I know the traffic issues there. So this, I think we're all aware.
Okay.
So this is about 25 feet from, oh, right by our entrance about, I will give you exact measurements, how many feet from my window. But this is looking west from the intended entrance to the storage facility.
Can I hold on a second? So you took those photographs, all these photographs?
I did, yeah.
And you, who indicates, I see there's labels showing the date and time. Who did those?
That's it. All pictures are taken from the area where Prospect meets Valley and where the intended entrance to the storage facility is and how it looks like and what these vehicles are doing.
Please continue.
So this is October 15, 2025, 1:05 PM. I have the pictures from all different times of the day.
Ms. Casetta, O10 and 11, 12?
Yes.
So this is looking west. This is looking Valley Street. Obviously, we are planning on putting a lot of vehicles there with 800-unit storage facility.
Objection completely. He doesn't know, he's not a traffic engineer. He can't opine on a lot of vehicles. It's all just a netting and it's a factory. He has no basis to say how many cars will be there from the storage facility.
We understand your concern, but we need to stick to what we know here.
Right. Thank you. All right. And the third image, that's Prospect also?
So obviously, this is very important in the context of the testimony that was given to the expert, how all these cars will be now going up Patterson and, I mean, up Prospect and connecting on Patterson once all this is built and developed. So this is what we see every day. People cannot pass either this way or they are doing shortcuts and they are coming down through our property down Valley Street. So this is how the, this is, these are three images from the intended entrance to the storage facility.
Next set of images, please. And again, you took these three images? Hold on. Okay, Monsignor, you took those three images as well?
Yes, obviously.
Those dates, you marked those dates, correct?
Yes. October 17, 10:01. I can be taking thousands of these pictures, but this is what I witness every day.
13, 14, and 15?
Yes.
Okay.
Allison, what's the plan? Like, no, beyond this, do you have more photos?
There's one more set and that's it.
What's the next set about?
Same.
But different days.
Then we just need one set now. If it's just showing the same issue. So let's see what this is.
Okay. So describe what's going on in each image, please.
So once again, this is what we witness. Here it's even more enhanced because now the trucks have no place to park. This also answers that question about why we wanted to show the video about truck circulation on our property because there is absolutely no place in that entire area for big trucks to turn around. And that's why they are entering the big parking area of St. John the Baptist, turning around. You would have seen what is happening. It's like a highway. Trucks are turning around and then repositioning themselves on this, on the street. So this is from the intended entrance to the storage downs, down west towards the brook. This one is up east Prospect. And this is, this is Valley Street. Obviously, this is 10 o'clock, the times when funerals happen and we have a lot, a lot of events. In fact, I was kind of troubled when we're talking about traffic on Sunday. This is a community of 2,000 families. I wanted to testify and show you what happens when a funeral is trying to enter in the area where we are intended to place an entrance to the storage facility. This was just a couple of days ago, mid-sized funeral. Over the last couple of weeks, we have had some major, major funerals. Cars are cannot even get in already as it is. So that's what it is all about.
Thank you.
And also, obviously, St. John's Academy, the safety there. Our parents, in light of everything that has happened over the last couple of weeks and months, are extremely concerned about who is on the property and, and all the issues regarding connected to safety and security.
Is that your responsibility as Monsignor to look after the security of the families and the people?
Absolutely. I spent countless hours over the last couple of weeks just trying to address some of these issues. We don't get funding for guards and armed guards and all that. So obviously, a lot of discussion with the parents about what happened over the last couple of weeks and months. Maybe people here in Hillsdale would like to know that at the end of July, and it's not connected, so you don't have to tell me that it's not, but when there was the shooting in New York City and NFL employee was calling his friends to alert them, this is person of St. John the Baptist. And the issues of regarding safety, security, who is on the property, what times of the day are discussed now each and every day, especially at St. John's Academy. So this is obviously very much connected also in light of the traffic patterns that have developed in the area.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Monsignor?
Well, yeah, we're going to turn over to the board to see if there are any questions. Thank you. Thank you for all the time you put into your testimony. It's appreciated. And you're obviously, how much care you have for your community too. Does the board have any questions?
Yeah, I'll-
Okay, we'll start with Mr. Riordan.
All your photos of these streets, these are all borough streets, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any signs posted saying no parking on any of these?
That I don't see. Yeah.
Your testimony, it's based upon that there's already people parked there and you don't like that? I'm not following. If they're allowed to park there, I don't understand what your argument is.
My argument is that we are bringing a couple hundred vehicles into the, into the area, which is a couple of feet from-
Well, he's answering-
There's no foundation-
He's answering the question.
There's no foundation for that whatsoever.
Well, you could just say that that's what he thinks.
Exactly.
I want you to say he's afraid that-
He's concerned that, yes.
We'll reword it for general purposes. And I'm also not going to coach his answer to my question.
Right. And there's also residential development being put in there. So there will be additional vehicles. Not only hundreds, but there will be additional vehicles.
Let's let him answer his question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm sorry. So your testimony about these public right-of-ways, that you have photographed vehicles parked on each side legally. My concern is what is the ground of something that is already taking place? You're afraid it will be concentrated even worse? Is that what you're trying to say?
No. Obviously, something major is happening and it's something I have witnessed over the last year or so since, since all this began. So-
Is your concern more during the construction period of the storage unit or after it's built or both? Because it seems like the trucks would be there primarily during the construction.
No, we are putting more industrial vehicles on the-
I understand that too, but they're going to be parked.
The church has existed in an industrial zone. It's most of its career. I know it's almost an industrial church, but that is the industrial zone. There are plenty of landscapers. So that's what I'm trying to say. These trucks already exist. You coexist with these trucks currently, correct?
Yes. But how many people were residing in that area? How many cars did we have in that area over the last decade or two?
I'm basing my, off your testimony, you're singling out like the construction vehicles. That's what I'm-
No, no. It's just what is happening, the traffic pattern, safety. And obviously, when St. John the Baptist has a funeral or a wedding and all those events and we witness this each and every day, people cannot get on the property. That's, that's very, very serious. And now we are going to be increasing the volume of vehicles, obviously. And the plan is to build 800-unit storage facility, no?
I don't know.
Access from early morning till late night?
I understand. Is there any photo showing where these problems are encroaching onto the church property or anything outside of the public right-of-way?
That's why I wanted to show you that video. Yes, you asked the question.
Nicely played, sir.
So you're saying, yes, that is the case?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my own question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So we are playing?
No, no.
No, no.
He will say that.
Not yet. Any other question? Yeah, Mr. Hope.
Steve kind of made the references to the vehicles in the public right-of-way. Which needs listening. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Steve made the references to the vehicles in the public right-of-way. Could, do you know if any of the vehicles that you observed in the public right-of-way are associated with the existing vehicle storage lot that is basically going to be relocated to the appropriate site?
I have to tell you something that I've been thinking about, and I will say it as you ask, okay?
It's yes or no?
No, I think this is more complicated, okay? Because I've been at these hearings now for a number of sessions. I have not heard one single answer to a simple question. Were these people who are going to be working and picking up those industrial vehicles from the enlarged parking area will be leaving their private vehicles? Are they Ubering every, every one of them into the area?
Let's assume that they could be-
Maybe they can answer it.
They can answer that.
Where are they going to be parking all these wonderful gentlemen who are picking up the landscaping vehicles in the morning? And where are they going to be parking all throughout the day? And that's what is happening. And now, when the volume of these vehicles will be increased, that's why this is also very relevant. Okay?
Is your question answered?
Are they paying for Uber rides, everything?
Because now is your time to answer our questions. I understand there's more that you'd like to say, but this is the time for you to answer our questions. Board, is there any other questions? Okay, so we're going to open to the public only if you have questions, not comments. Okay, so we're going to open to the public only if you have questions, not comments. Comments are coming later about what, anything that you saw or heard from this testimony? Is there anyone that would like to ask a question? You want to ask a question? You want to cross?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Tavel's going to cross. No, you're allowed.
Can we just pause one second? Our attorney's.
Well, she's in the bathroom, but he's, he's allowed, he's allowed to continue.
I was just, if anyone came to the public, she should have taken her record.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not going to let the public know.
Fine, please.
You can cross, Mr. Tavel.
No, I think I should wait for.
Okay.
Just in case something comes up.
Okay.
She should hear it.
Well, I'm up. Thank you, everyone. Well, I just want everyone to get up and go. Resettle everyone. So if we could take a quiet five minutes?
I'm spoken like a true middle school teacher.
Seeing none, we'll move on to your next expert.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
At this point, let me call Robert Costa, please.
Raise your hand.
Absolutely.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the true, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. State your full name and spell your last.
Absolutely. For the record, my name is Robert Louis Costa, C-O-S-T-A, 325 South River Street in Hackensack, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Okay, so Mr. Costa is being presented as an expert in engineering and also as a planner, professional planner. Mr. Costa, could you please provide the board with the benefit of your education and experience with regard to engineering and planning?
Absolutely. Graduated in 1984 Manhattan College, which is now Manhattan University, because they just sent me something in the mail to donate to them. With that, I've been, I was with Schwanowheat Associates for about seven or eight years, did my apprenticeship under Bill Schwanowheat, formed my own firm in 1990, and I've been self-unemployed ever since. I'm the town engineer in River Ridge, New Jersey, the land use engineer in River Ridge, the planning board engineer in the city of Englewood, Bogota, Rochelle Park. We do work for the county. I do private site plans, subdivisions, and as I'm getting older, I actually do expert work in court.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Still licensed, 34702, engineer, 4639 as a planner.
All right. Could you present, tell this board, three other boards of which you, or courts in which you've appeared and testified as an expert?
Bergen County. Thank you. I don't know if you need to dock it numbers, but I'm actually at two cases running right, right now there, and actually one down in Jersey City.
Okay.
We're just, we're just checking that one of our members may have to recuse just from your testimony. Ed, do you have?
I also have to.
Okay, so we have two.
First, Ed.
Are both of your interactions with him just as fellow consultants?
So, for the record, I am on a project in Franklin Lakes in which the Costa firm has done the drawings for I have not met the expert witness, and I don't think he knows who I am either, and that's the beauty of our relationship. And I literally just received drawings today, so I do not have a relationship with this expert witness, but I'm an architect, I know half the engineers in the state as well. So, I don't see it as a.
You can stay. What about Ed?
Mr. Costa is the engineer for my land use board in River Ridge, which I am land use secretary. So, we do have a relationship, and we do work together.
Mr. Alter, are you a voting member, or you just serve the board?
Yeah.
I, I tend to think that's. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think, I mean, respectfully, I don't think there's a financial connection, right? So, why would there be?
We're just checking.
Yeah, no, I agree. Yeah, caution is, I agree with you, and I'm agreeing, I think that there's no basis.
Thank you for, thank you for the time. Mr. Tuvell, any objection to any of this?
No, I think that's just typical interaction with professionals. It's not.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Costa accepted as by the board as?
Yes, thank you.
As for engineering and for planning, yes?
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, members of the board, the public, thank you.
All right. So, Mr. Costa, in your, in your capacity as an engineer, have you ever designed or helped design self-storage facilities?
Yes.
So, you have, to the mic.
Yes.
So, you have experience with self-storage facilities, yes?
Yes.
Okay. Now, what did you review in preparation for today's hearing with documents?
So, the documents that were provided to us, obviously, the site plan, the architectural, some of the architectural concepts, the elevations, the redevelopment, Hillsdale-Patterson Street redevelopment plan, I believe this was the latest copy. We tried, I believe, opening it, I just want to make sure for the record. It was prepared November 18th, 2020, for the record, and amended October 2024.
Most recently amended October 2024, yes?
Correct.
That is the most recent version, correct?
That's the version I have. I believe this is the most recent. Going through this very carefully, and again, this is what we started with, I know the preparer, and again, just for the record, I know Mr. Tuvell, we've also worked together in the past, so it is a little bit, I guess the county is a little bit small, so everybody kind of knows each other on the circuit. But one thing I want to get started with, if I could just show one of the photos from this, or the concept from this plan.
Page 38?
Page 38.
Of the redevelopment plan?
Yes.
Do you have to mark the redevelopment plan? I don't, I think it's, I'm sorry, but I'm just asking.
Yeah, I think it's already part of the record.
Right. That's what I had to clarify. Thank you.
And at this point, we're talking about block 1208, which is where the proposed self-storage is going to be. Stop. There you go. Perfect. Okay. So, this was the, in the, in the Hillsdale-Patterson Street redevelopment plan, this was the concept that the, that was given to the mayor and council. Again, the self-storage facility along the property line. As you look to the north, you see the proposed apartment buildings, and then you see on the south side of the building, the loading area, the front door, and the parking. And what I want to get to the board's attention, if you look at the concept on this, and then if you take the actual site plan that's under proposal, okay, the circulation pattern, and again, the Monsignor touched on it briefly, but I was actually out there myself, I think the first meeting that I was here, we didn't testify, the applicant was finishing his testimony, the traffic engineer was here. There's parking along the south side of Prospect, there's a curve, there's a bend in the roadway, and a couple of things that jumped out at me. First thing, Prospect Place is being used as the circulation, as their internal circulation, even though it's a public right-of-way. With that, and if you go back to the architectural plan, the concept, this is all internal circulation. However, the Patterson Street amended plan allows for the self-storage and allows for one thing, and I scoured it. It allows parking to back out onto Prospect. What it doesn't allow, it doesn't allow loading to back out on Prospect. And if I am correct, this board doesn't have jurisdiction, because in the plan, if you go to page six, where it says deviation requests.
Go to page six, please.
So, it's going to be six, it'll be six and seven. This board has jurisdiction on C1 variances, C2 variances. Next page, page seven. But if you read the last paragraph, you don't have jurisdiction on granting D variances. This plan to do, in my opinion, the proposal, would have to go back to the mayor and council to amend the redevelopment plan. Because it's not in the ordinance, it's not in the redevelopment plan, so in my opinion, it's prohibited.
Okay, thank you. Focusing on the, on the self-storage unit, you also talked about deviations, so there's, the applicant has withdrawn some, the with designs, deviation application, but there's another chapter of the Hillsdale Code, section 310-106, circulation, and I'll direct your attention to it, and I'll read it to the record, it says, "Provision shall be made for safe and adequate circulation of pedestrians and vehicles within the property," period. Now, in your professional opinion, does this plan provide for circulation of pedestrians and vehicles within the property?
No, it does not. If we can go back to the, the site plan, please. So, again, the proposal, just to keep it clear, keep the record very clear, the proposal is obviously to provide parking that backs directly, directly whether you go in and then back out, or back in and go front out. Five spaces, I believe it is, in this location with ADA requirements, three to the east, and then in the center, the loading, again, which either backs in, either front in, back in, or back in, front out. Just go to the, the circulation plan, the, I think it's 27? Should be the next one, right? That's it, 27. So, this would be in your package sheet number 27, and I just want to touch on this. So, here's your loading, the internal loading zone that's inside the building, and here's your, your truck movements. If it's coming in from Prospect and heading easterly, pulling in, obviously, you would have to pull out and keep on going and do that maneuver. This one shows it backing in and going front out, and you can see where the turning templates treated, it's on the wrong side of the road. So, you're on a curve, what they failed to show was actually the site distance, because the building, and if I put the landscape plan on, and the dumpster area, does not create enough site distance to adequately address safety. So, it doesn't meet site distance requirements under ASHTO. It actually pushes the, what are we doing? Just there where we are. Again, it takes the truck on the opposite side of the roadway into the opposite lane of traffic. And also, if you want to just stay on this, if you want to talk about the driveway on 1209, if you do the site distance on 1209, in this respect, it's a 25-foot roadway, that doesn't meet adequate site distance. So, you have a safety issue with that. Going, jumping back on the self-storage site, you have pedestrian walkways. You can go to four, I guess. This is your pedestrian path, they have handicap depressions running through, so in essence, they would be backing out over the sidewalk into the public right-of-way to do their, their turning movements. Again, inadequate safety problems. What should be doing is going back to the concept. It's up, 38, isn't it?
No, but if they had six.
Oh, I'm sorry. There you go. This is all internal, so you'd have a driveway. In this case, the redevelopment plan allows the driveway to be in close proximity, even though your ordinance say they have to be 50 feet away from an intersection, the redevelopment plan says, no problem, don't worry about it, you can put it here. And that's where they showed it actually, in this concept, to be closer to the intersection than what's allowed under your ordinances. In my opinion, you need to do internal circulation, you cannot do it in the street, it doesn't meet the loading requirements to back out and back in, you're on the wrong side of the road, you have limited site distance, all of the above, this board, in my opinion, controls circulation, so you can certainly modify this plan. My opinion, if this is a permitted use, and this can't be stopped, my recommendation, go back to the site plan, would be to eliminate this on a curve on Prospect, flip it to the north side of the building, do it under internal circulation, where you would have one driveway internal to the building, so it would operate as any site plan, any building, any proposal would, take the driveways across the street and add one driveway and align it with this intersection. This way, if you come out of here, you'll have adequate site distance, because you have a straight roadway. You're not on a curve. To me, that makes it safe, you don't have cars backing out over the sidewalk, and trucks backing out over the sidewalk. And again, going back to the photos that the Monsignor put up before, unless you eliminate parking, which this board cannot do, you're going to have vehicles parked here, you don't even have adequate backup room to do it, to do the maneuver. Your ordinance requires for 90-degree parking, a 24-foot aisle, standard, 90-degree parking, 18-foot space, 24 feet to back up. If this car backs up, and there's somebody here, and on this side, they have to come out, go past the street, it's 30-foot wide, they're nine feet into the other lane, on a curve that has limited site distance, that doesn't meet ASHTO requirements. Then I heard, we went a step further, let's move on from this, let's go to drainage. I heard the engineer testify, no problem, no problem. We're decreasing the amount of impervious. We went into the drainage calculations. Pretty simple, if it wasn't simple, I couldn't do it. It's geometry, it's slopes and sizes. And this is my writing. This is, I believe, a 12-inch pipe, if you use their numbers, their inverts, their measurements, this pipe is backpitched, because right now, I'll show you the drainage patterns that happen in this location. Let's go to the other sheet first, so we can see the whole thing.
Mr. Magalhaes, I think we should mark these.
Yeah, I was going to suggest, yeah.
They have handwriting on them.
I think we're at zero, 016?
Let me just double check. Yes.
And what I'll do is I'll have Mr. Costa send me stills, not stills, but single sheets, and then I'll submit it to, to Tanya. Thank you. Good. Could you, Mr. Costa?
Simple. Again, the proposal is to put an HD, 15-inch HDP pipe along the easterly side, excuse me, connect that to the inlet in the street, comes across to a 12-inch pipe, runs westerly to a 12-inch pipe, crosses back with a 12-inch pipe, comes into a 15-inch pipe, 15-inch pipe, 24-inch pipe to the brook. Simple thing. If one of my young engineers came to me and I said, let's start from, just keep it simple, why am I putting a 15 into a 12? That would be the first thing that would kind of say, maybe something isn't right. We go to the next thing. This produces 3.96 CFS, this pipe, that's the capacity, full flow of this pipe, 1.99. This, this reach is inadequate to what this can take. That's another flag that comes up. Now, we go over to here, which is on the other sheet, I believe. This one is actually backpitched.
Could you give a page number for that, please? That's, well, it says, by, it's handwritten on there, so that's your handwriting as well?
That is.
Sheet 11?
Sheet 11, and then I guess the other one would be sheet 12? Sheet 12.
Okay. Please continue.
Now, their proposal for the roof leaders, so I believe there's five or six roof leaders, 8-inch pipes coming down the roof leaders tying into a 12-inch pipe to a 15. We can go to the other sheet to show that. Not that I did every single reach, I figured, let's just do the last one. This 12-inch reach has a capacity under gravity flow, 3.57, based on the, based on the actual diameter of the pipe and the slope. Can we just go to the drainage caps real fast? So, this picks up the entire roof. 109,000-square-foot building, the floor area, I'm not sure exactly what it is, because I didn't really try to check if their drainage caps were 100% correct or not, only what we thought was pertinent. So, we're using their numbers. Two-year proposed, 3.78. Yeah, they're already on a two-year storm. If you go with a higher storm, it's not even adequate to handle their drainage coming off the, off their roof. If you use the, the future storms, which is probably 30% more, or whatever it is, based on DEP's rules, that doesn't work. Now, once you add this, then you go across the street, the 24-inch, based on the drainage area coming in there, totally inadequate. And what they said, the engineer actually did say, is a benefit, because we're decreasing the amount of impervious. Show us how much we're decreasing. Once I find, I'll keep the suspense down, it's roughly 700 gallons, I believe it's one, 100 cubic feet of decrease. 700 gallons is a hot tub.
So, in your opinion, that's inadequate?
It's inadequate. Also, and I, I'm trying to figure out soil movement, so 1,000 cubic yards, plus or minus, I saw in the application, I said, where is the actual numbers that we tried to find earlier today? And I think that's where that information came from, if I'm not mistaken. So, it's based, I believe, on their DEP submissions. And what, what hit me, it didn't hit me actually till today. They have column lines, they have piers, they have rebar designs, they have construction drawings. Normally, you would come to a planning board with not all of that in play, but it seems like this is, this is past that. This is basically, approve this tonight, memorialize it in 30 days, 45 days later, I want a building permit. That's why I think everybody is locked into this, and I didn't realize it till tonight. But when you do this calculation to the, to a millimeter, and I looked at the concept drawings, Roda, can you just put the concepts up there? We don't have the architectural. We have them somewhere, though. But if, I'll put on the record, if you look at the architectures, and I can, I have hard copy, but you'll see the actual column lines on their concept, that would go back to these piers and these columns that were calculated for the removal of the, of the volume of water that they're storing underneath, or not storing underneath. So, there's no detention, there's very little benefit as far as, in my opinion, 700 gallons of water, that they're doing less. And if you go across the street, and if you look at their calculations for the, for the soil movement, you roughly have about four feet of flooding. And what else kind of tweaked my interest? Because they thought of everything. If you go into vehicular storage for across the street, under the definition, and I believe it's on page?
Nine.
Nine.
Of the, of the redevelopment plan.
Of the redevelopment plan.
Could you read that to the board, please? There it is. The vehicular storage, was it, has it provided?
So, this definition was actually modified from your, your ordinance in order to allow that to happen. What piqued, what really piqued my interest was, why did they highlight boat and boat trailers? You got four feet of flooding, and we're going to put boats in the floodway and a flood plane, and somebody obviously wrote that in there. One thing that they didn't think about, your, your ordinance actually has a hazardous section in the ordinance, as far as hazardous materials, and I'm not quite sure if you can store hazardous materials within the floodway. And again, you're in a C1 waterway. They do have a DEP permit, I've read it, I looked at it, there's no question, it's past the, the 30-day timeframe to, to try to negate that permit, but the question is whether or not that permit disclosed everything that's possibly doing on this particular site. And I don't believe you can put hazardous materials within a floodway in a, next to a C1 waterway.
Well, what hazardous materials are you, are you suggesting would be stored there?
Well, again, based on this, you have landscape equipment, landscape trucks, trippers.
This is a DEP issue. What he's saying is that.
Well, I disagree with that, quite frankly.
Can you both wait for a minute? Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Tuvell.
I, I.
Yes, you have not. Continue.
But if he wants to make a point to the DEP that he thinks that there's something wrong with the permit, he can make that point to the DEP. That's it. This is done within the jurisdiction of the board. It's within the jurisdiction of the board, it's compliance with the stormwater regulations that the municipal.
May I? So, it is relevant for a couple of reasons. First of all, you have to comply with any DEP requirement. If their, if their application was deficient somehow, then the DEP require, then DEP permit would be pulled. More important, the redevelopment plan has several instances where you have to look out for the Pascak Brook, which is, as Mr. Costa referred to, is, is this category one stream. I mean, your plan makes specific reference and calls it that, and it wants to protect it. In fact, on page two of the plan, it says, such use, this redevelopment plan has been developed by the borough to encourage the transition of an industrial site that is anchored by a solid waste facility that at its peak serviced over 200 garbage trucks per day. Such use had a deleterious impact on the borough and the environment. In particular, such use adversely impacted the adjacent category one stream in Woodlands, that would be the Pascak Brook. Encouraging a higher and better use is described here as a primary driver in the borough's determination to adopt this plan. That's on page two, as I mentioned. Also, on page six of your plan, under Roman numeral V, capital B, adverse influences. No use or reuse shall be permitted, which when conducted under proper and adequate conditions and safeguards, will produce corrosive, toxic, or noxious fumes, glare, electromagnetic disturbance, electromagnetic disturbance, radiation, smoke, cinders, odors, dust, or waste, undue noise or vibration, or, more important, or objectionable features so as to be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare. And there are other instances in your plan where you, where this plan says, protect the Pascak Brook. It's a, it's a category one stream, protect it from any toxic problems. And Mr. Costa made very clear that those, these vehicles being in the floodway have toxic materials upon them, such as pesticides, correct?
Right.
So, those are, so it is relevant for this board to consider whether or not this plan is compliant with the plan. For top, for, for those top, to make sure you protect the stream. That's basically it. So, it is, it is relevant.
So, to simplify it.
Thank you.
And I don't mean to speak for you, but I think the position that you're taking is that this vehicle storage use will have detrimental effects on the brook, and therefore is not in compliance with the plan. Is that a fair summary of your position?
It is.
I, I don't think necessarily there is anything egregious in the application the town put into the DEP, it's just perhaps, you know, this is a level that the board can consider beyond what the DEP is considering. Is that correct?
I think it could.
I don't think you're implying the town's permitting process, the DEP's process, was incorrect?
No, I'm just saying, oh, but maybe the DEP didn't have all the information. That's what Mr. Costa's suggesting.
Okay, well, I, I don't think that's fair to suggest. I think that's speculative, so I think we can take your point and move on.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Costa?
Yes.
I want, you talked about the, the entrance to the, to the self-storage facility, it's 1208, block 1208. Is there anything in the plan that requires, that allows or permits the applicant to put the storage on Prospect Place rather than Piermont, even though the property address is 560 Piermont?
No, it does not.
Now, you heard Mr. Tuvell say that the applicant has withdrawn several of the exceptions, but the one that's remaining is the planted, planted planters in the, in the vehicle storage lot, and the need for those, for that exception. Did you recall the testimony as to why they needed that exception?
I don't recall the testimony, but I believe it's.
So, it's circulation within?
I think it's for circulation, or just the sizing of the spaces themselves. But again, in the, in the plan, it calls for buffering to the front.
Okay. And if, if the applicant removed the southern driveway from the vehicle storage lot, that would probably eliminate the exception requirement, request for the planters? And also, I want to point your attention to page 21 of the plan, under Roman numeral 11A7A, talks about circulation and rights of way. In particular, 7A says, regarding Valley Street, truck traffic should be prohibited from entering or exiting the redevelopment area via Valley Street, except that trucks should be permitted to access Lot 11 on Block 1207 from Valley Street until such time that the use on the site changes, ceases, or is abandoned. So. So under the plan, is, is discouraged that trucks use Valley Street to access the redevelopment area, which includes...
Correct.
This area.
Yes.
So by removing that southern driveway from Block 1209, would that also help to discourage truck traffic from Valley Street?
Well, again, my, my recommendation would be, obviously, to put the, put the driveway, align it with Piermont. And then if you wanted to eliminate the truck traffic turning right, just no right-hand turns. Eliminate that.
Have just one driveway, then?
Have one driveway centered, fenced off. Certainly, you could put some streetscape along it to, to try to soften the look of it and align it, and, and that would be it. And then no right-hand turns would eliminate, obviously, would eliminate any, any traffic going in this direction. You either go straight or go to the left.
And with respect, turning back to the, the planted planner exception, is it reasonable in your estimation that, that improving circulation is a sufficient basis to strike that requirement?
Absolutely. The, the board certainly has jurisdiction over site plan. There's no question about that. And they have the right to review it on the circulation and feel whether it's safe, adequate, or inadequate. That's certainly under their purview. If I'm right about the first thing I said, then I don't believe they even have jurisdiction to hear the application unless it's amended.
Okay. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Earl, you want to cross some?
The first is, I believe Mr. Costa's been at at least two or three of these meetings. And what's interesting is, it's nice that he's had our plans and the applicant, the objector's had our plans for almost three months to look at, and never once have we gotten a report, a comment letter, nothing. Just waiting until the night of the hearing to bring up issues. Whereas they've, I just want to put that in everybody's mind, whereas we've had, we've gave them our plans immediately after the first meeting, when they were requested to their prior attorney to review, and the DEP permits. Those were all provided. And I know what the response is going to be. The response is going to be, well, under the municipal land use law, the applicant has to have everything on file, the objector does not. But I think to, in, in a due process and in a fairness capacity, there's been multiple meetings where they've sat through testimony, they've been able to look at, at, at the record, and till today, we've heard no technical response on anything. So I just want to make that clear, and I think the board should consider that. The other issue, and then I'm going to ask for, for a five-minute recess, if that's okay, because Mr. Costa had the ability to review our plans for three months and make comment, whereas I had about 30 minutes to hear his testimony for the first time, which again, to me, is a fairness issue that is just, you know, I'm not saying that there's anything improper about it legally, but just perception-wise, it's just, it's just unfair. But to go to his jurisdictional issue, the permitted uses in the zone are self-storage and vehicle storage, and there's a lot of others, and they're all listed under the principal uses section. So when you, we look at zoning, and I'll get to this when I cross Mr. Costa as a planner, when we look at principal permitted uses, okay, that's the area that we look at to see if we deviate from, from a permitted use. The permitted uses are self-storage and vehicle storage, okay? It doesn't say self-storage with parking that is internal to the site only, or access that is internal to the site only. Now, there are parking standards and loading standards in a separate section of the, of the redevelopment plan, if we think we comply with them. But even if Mr. Costa were correct, which we don't believe he is, that would just be a C variance deviation. So that's how ordinances are typically, and redevelopment plans are typically evaluated and looked at. But could we get a five-minute break, just because, again, this is the first time we're hearing all this testimony?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Please come to order. Thank you, everyone. So we don't need to do a roll call? I think we can see everybody's present. All board members are present, all professionals are present. Ms. Casetta, is there anything you would like to say about the last witness? Testimony?
Not in particular about this testimony. I think there is an issue about the jurisdiction that should be discussed.
Yes, there's a question.
Yes. And it should be discussed in, in the context of what we're doing tonight.
Yes.
Where we're going with the application. So I'm trying to understand the objector's position on the use variance. I'm not sure that I follow the reasoning.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Costa?
I'm sorry.
Can you please stay at the mic? Thank you.
Sorry.
If you could just repeat your position on a use variance being required, because I'm not quite sure I follow, and I think it would be beneficial to everyone to hear it again.
Sure. Hang on, one second.
And I just want to add too, that I agree that knowing this ahead of time or seeing a report on this would have helped our professionals be prepared for how to respond. So, you know, please think of the board when you're preparing and keep us informed. Thank you.
Yeah, there was no report prepared by Mr. Costa.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do.
Normally, there would have been. Thank you.
Meteore Chair, just, just for the record, because I just want to clarify one thing.
Yep.
No?
Yep.
Okay. And again, I know Jason, I have the highest respect for him, but just for the record, I personally did not meet on October 1st with the applicant.
Right.
Two members of my staff did, I wasn't available. So we actually...
As did I and Monsignor.
So we did meet with them at the beginning of October. So I just want to put that on the record, that...
That's fine. I think you still heard my point, though. It would have been helpful to have this in writing, so, thank you. Because now we're going to have to push, well, we'll get into that in a bit, so.
In the plan, it talks about parking. It does not talk about loading. So as far as parking...
Rob, what page do you want?
Hold on one second, I just got to find it.
Is it eighteen? Yeah, I'm trying. Or is it, what? I'm just trying to find the section, but in the plan, it talks about parking. That can go back. Let me see. Now, it was standing above on Block 1208, Lot 1, a self-storage facility is allowed to provide parking in the yard area facing Prospect Place, providing that the parking spaces are set back at least five feet from the curb line. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
These requirements shall not be. But there's also another area in there.
I think you, you might be taking a page 20 and...
That's it. For self-storage uses where parking area backs up directly onto the right-of-way, the four-foot strip can be provided along the building foundation. Parking. It only allows for parking to come in and out, not loading. That's, that's my position.
So just to take it a step further, your position is that the loading is an accessory use and that the function...
No, what I'm saying is prohibited. It's prohibited. You can't, what you're doing is, you're using Prospect, you're using a public right-of-way as your internal circulation. They allowed it under this plan for parking. They did not allow it for loading.
You're saying because it doesn't say it in there?
That's correct.
That it's not allowed, just because it's not stated in there?
Correct.
Okay.
Parking is under this plan.
I followed you the first time. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Allison, anything else? Tom, I'm curious what your thoughts are. You know, our--
Digesting on the fly.
Yes. Thank you.
There is a distinction between principal uses and accessory uses. I think Mr. Costa read correctly from the ordinance what redevelopment plan functions like in the ordinance. It's under Section-- bear with me while I get to the section heading. So it's under Section 10 Parking Standards, Item A, General, and then it goes down to A Planting and Landscaping is where this provision is contained. It's A.D., I think. So I'll read it verbatim, and then it's a matter of how it applies to what the book does. So it says, the part that's relevant, it says for self-storage uses where parking area backs up directly onto the right-of-way, the four-foot planting strip can be provided, et cetera. So I think the objector's interpreting that to mean that it says that only parking can back up onto the street. Matter of interpretation.
But I would just say this.
Yes.
Which is what I said, which is what I said earlier. Even-- I'll get to what I think about this provision in a second, but it's in the parking standards. So even if it were, even if a relief was needed from it, it would be a C variance. It wouldn't be in the principal permitted uses or accessory uses section. That's the threshold issue. The other issue, though, is the whole premise of self-storage is whether you're on the inside or you're on the outside of the building, you're parking, and you're taking out your belongings, and you're putting them into your unit, or you're going into your unit and taking something out. That's the whole premise. So to me, it's clear that this is just meant to deal with the self-storage use as a whole in terms of how the actual property functions. This doesn't, this doesn't deal with like a loading space for some delivery truck that goes to like a retail shopping center or goes to a warehouse. That's completely different. Loading, when you deal with, when you typically deal with loading, you deal with retail where there's a tractor-trailer has to deliver goods. You're at a warehouse, tractor-trailers have to do-- that's not what this is. This is part and parcel of the fact that you park, you take your things out, or you park and you put your things in the storage facility. But again, I leave it up to the board, but there is no way it's a use issue. At the very minimal, it's a bulk issue, but I don't even think it's that because it corresponds with exactly what the activity is at a self-storage facility.
So Allison, how should we proceed at this time?
I tend to agree with Mr. Chubel on this, but I also am just thinking about it for the first time tonight.
Okay.
I know there's been discussion about adjourning this hearing, and I would suggest letting everyone research it a little bit further.
Yeah, I think we need to do some more research, being our professionals are just seeing, just heard the testimony.
Just by way of example, the sign variance, you weren't allowed to put the sign at a certain height. Because you're not allowed to do that, it's a prohibited use within the zone. That basically what Mr. Costa is arguing, that anything that's not permitted in the redevelopment plan, or that you DB from in the redevelopment plan, would be something prohibited and therefore prohibited use, which is not a proper argument. The argument would be towards that they would be bulk issues.
Well, it sounds like our attorney agrees, and then the board will confer on that.
Well, there's just a difference between the sign, which would be a condition, versus a use, which is what Mr. Costa is talking about, but I just wanted to put that in there.
Okay, so this is why we're going to take a break, and we're going to have our professionals, you know, will provide more research for the board, and we'll open with this at our next meeting. Okay, so do we want to announce that we're carrying the meeting?
Before you do that, do we have an opportunity to put our own submissions on this issue? And if so, what would be our deadline? Counsel's deadline, if you want anything from us.
I got it. I got to tell you, this is coming to the point of ridiculousness, where if this was going to be an issue from the beginning, most people would have sent in a letter outlining this or a report outlining this issue, because it's kind of a threshold issue. And I just think that the board professionals should just decide it, allow the board to make a decision. It's a land use board, so you can interpret it without any issue.
I'm going to ask our professionals if they feel they need time for an interpretation or they're ready to advise the board at this time. Tom, do you feel ready to advise?
Seeing as how we're coming back, I think it would be--
Okay. I won't worry, Mr. Chubel. I'm sure you'll see everything that our professionals prepare. And you can, both can some mikra.
I--
If you want us to.
I don't necessarily want you to.
Okay.
I'm trying to be fair to all parties.
Yes.
I do think it's something for Mr. Behrens and I to look into and give the board our opinions.
Okay.
But when we return, you're free to provide your own arguments on the matter, if you'd like.
That's fine. Whatever the board wants.
Yeah, exactly. I agree with that.
And I wanted to ask this before we move on to a different topic. Mr. Magaleta, are you done presenting evidence now, or do you have any more witnesses or submissions that you intend to present at the next hearing?
Done, and yes to both questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So are we not moving on to questioning the--
Yeah.
No, no, because we need clarity on the jurisdiction, jurisdiction first, which we'll get, which we're close to getting, but we need more time for a professional swing. So we're going to carry this matter.
I think Mr. Costa has a conflict on December 11th. I think it's the date I was given.
Well, we have a full meeting on the 13th. There's no way we can do that. We have members away the end of November.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can we also be sure that we understand how these issues affect whatever decisions we have to make?
Absolutely.
To relate them, because--
Absolutely.
I'm finding there's such a discongestion of ideas.
Yes. Yes.
I'm kind of lost in what we can decide and what we can't decide.
Yes, that's exactly why we're taking some time, and so the board can have some clarity on that as well. Thank you. 11th is when we had you scheduled. We don't have members here. We had a meeting the 25th, but I don't even think we have a quorum. Can I see from the members who's available on the 25th? We cleared the date already with, with the applicant for December 11th. Do you have, you're the only one from your firm who can testify?
Well, I think I have to, because I'm subject to cross, so--
That's true.
I'm going on a cruise December 7th with my wife, even though December 5th is the anniversary, and I really don't want to get divorced at this stage.
Yeah. It's a very, it's just, it's a very hard time of year.
Probably be a quicker hearing, though.
So can the board check who's available that November 25th? That's also a bad week, so the professionals have to check. I know you're not going to be here. You're not going to be here. So we may not even-- you will? You are?
Thanksgiving week, yeah.
You are.
What about, hold on. Is there any way that the, that this room is available where we could do a special pretty quickly?
Probably not. I mean, it's also about the board members' availability and our attorney's availability, but-- I know you do, but we also, we have, the league is coming up and a lot of dates that are tough, so we have to think about that. We have a professional that's not normally here.
Are you, you said, Madam Chair, you said you're meeting November 13th?
Yeah.
Okay, here's my suggestion. I think we carry it to November 13th for the purposes of just maintaining jurisdiction without further notice.
Okay.
Mr. Magaleta and I can correspond with Ms. Casetta.
Yeah, we can see if we can play with some other news.
And if there's a special meeting date that works, you can announce it at that meeting, and we can carry it at that point. So like, for example, you know, if Mr. Costa is leaving on the 7th, maybe one of the first, maybe that first week of December, there's a date that's available. I know that the Thanksgiving week is probably tough.
It's not, yeah, it's not going to happen.
But, but I don't know, like the November 17th, I don't, you know, I'm just looking at other dates, but--
Yeah, we'll survey the board and see what we can do.
So this is all predicated on us finding out if we have jurisdiction based upon a loading truck being able to back directly onto the road, correct? Am I hearing this right?
Loading, yes.
Yeah.
So we're carrying this entire hearing?
But we--
Because we're not sure.
No, that's not the reason we're carrying. We have another hearing, and we still have to open to the public and cross, and we're not going to get through it tonight. This is not the only reason.
So one other request on, I guess, I guess you want to wait till we're all here to make that, that decision. Okay, that's fine. All right.
I don't think that will take a long time.
Right. Again, my, my presentation is done. So it's going to question cross, public comment, closing, and then deliberation.
Okay, so you want to carry it to November 13th for the purpose of control. It's a control date.
Okay, sorry, we're just checking something on our calendar, but yes, you can announce that.
Okay, so for those present in the room and watching on TV or online, this hearing will be adjourned to the board's November 13th meeting, 7:30 PM in this room. You will not receive another notice. Please also note that, as of right now, the intention is to adjourn it again on that night, but we're going to have to have some conversations among the parties to figure out the new date. But as of right now, it will be continued on November 13th.
Okay, and just, well, can we get the exhibits that were submitted today by the--
Yes.
Yes.
With, with, with all the notes from Mr. Costa?
As well as the board.
Yes. No, I--
Yeah, I think I spoke to Tanya. I'm going to just get a flash drive. Go to her. I'll send, I'll email it to you, Jason. Yeah, just because I think Mr. Steteel has to look at it also.
Yes.
We do have two hearings. Depending, we, they, we may move the meeting time up. We'll talk to the board to see they're not, they shouldn't be that lengthy hearings. So we may be able to move our moving time up and fit you all in.
So for the 13th, simply control, or should we maybe anticipate the actual hearing at that date as well?
We're going to try.
Okay.
We're going to try.
That's fine. Okay, that's fine.
So, so we're carrying this to November 13th, 2025, 7:30 PM?
Yes.
With no further notice to the public here?
Yes, so hopefully the public--
In these chambers.
In these chambers.
In this room.
Yes. Okay, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess again because we have another hearing and we have to switch attorneys, so thank you. Yes, okay, thank you, we're gonna take a five-minute recess again because we have another hearing and we have to switch attorneys, so thank you. Okay, thank you. So, we are, are we back yet, Tanya? Are we on? Yes. Okay, so we're back on, professionals and members are here, we'd like to add our, Mark Liebman is reemerging as our long-lost attorney, and Mayor Scheinfield and Dr. Weinberg will be partaking in this hearing, correct? Okay. All right, welcome, Mr. BA, are you presenting tonight on behalf of the town?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Yes, I forgot, sorry, we need a moment on our end. Thank you. Okay, do you want to? You have to swear, Mr.?
No.
No, he does, no swearing in, it's not that kind of hearing? Okay, just checking, okay, so he can just present his testimony? Thank you, you may begin.
Good evening, my name is Mike Gasali, I'm the Boro Administrator, and with me, with me is Nick Chelius, our Boro Engineer.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Sure, N-I-C-K, Nick Chelius, C-H-E-L-I-U-S.
C-H-E-L-I-U-S. Your name is here?
Yes.
Okay, we are here tonight to present the memorial field plan on Hillsdale Avenue, and to demonstrate that it's in compliance with the master plan, the master plan is very specific, that the town must provide open space and recreational facility. Nick will go over the plan with his view of where things are, this is a current use, we are just making it better. We have, you have a letter from our Boro planner that goes through the master plan and talks about its compliance with the current master plan. If you allow our engineer to go through the plan, we're ready for that.
Yeah, just, you need to pat the mic.
You can take the mic?
Yeah. Everybody has a plan in front of them too, so, okay, because it's kind of hard to see.
Yes, thank you.
Perfect, so I'm gonna start just at the driveway access along Hillsdale Out. So we have a two-way entrance that's across from Holdrum Street. There is two-way traffic in the drive aisle, loops all the way around in this L shape, and ends over here. We also provided an emergency access drive, which, this would be specifically for emergency vehicles or any other kind of, you know, urgent item not open to the public, there's a gate on this side, but this whole area is there in case we need it to provide emergency access. Thank you. Okay, so this, this is going to be grass paved, so it's not a paved surface, it's, it's going to appear as though it's grass. It just, um, is, it's reinforced underneath so that it can carry the weight of a fire truck or ambulance or anything like that. This, these hatched areas on the side here are just, this is pervious pavement and the rest of it is just conventional asphalt. We also have gates, you can see here and here, for the ability for ambulances to drive onto the field if they need to, and, and loop around without any problem. This is a full synthetic turf field, there's also going to be a picnic area right here with some benches and tables. That's right in front of the existing Fieldhouse building, this area right here is allocated for a future playground. It's not going to be done as part of this project, but we're just going to be prepping that area for the installation of a playground in the future. And then we have two basketball courts here, the main layout of the field is going to be, we have three baseball diamonds, there is a larger baseball diamond over here, this is a 50/70, and these two are the softball-sized diamonds down here. And then across the field, you have a multipurpose that can be used for soccer, football, or lacrosse. And it's full-size for all three. Outside of that, there are retaining walls that are enclosing the site, so in order to make all this fit, we, we had to use retaining walls, so there is a wall here along the parking lot, there is an additional wall here, a wall here, and here, and then just around the edge of the basketball course and playground area. And outside of that, that's the, that's the general layout of the site. Do you have any?
Can you talk to the drainage?
Sure, so from a, from a drainage standpoint, we're using a combination of infiltration chambers, and obviously some, some water is going to be, as I said, out from the site. So we, we have a separate plan, it's, it's not shown on here, but there are, there's infiltration chambers in the parking lot, there's three separate systems, I believe, and then there's one very large system that's kind of located in this area in the middle of the field. We're meeting all the, the required stormwater runoff reductions that the DEP requires for the 100-year storm, 10-year storm, 2-year storm. So there, there will be no increased runoff from this development, it will be an improvement in total runoff. The, the whole stormwater system kind of ties out to this, this existing inlet that's, that's sitting down here. And any, any overflow basically goes through that. Is there anything else from a high level you wanted me to touch on?
No, this is just high level, again, we're here just to ensure that this is in compliance with the master plan. You have all the plans in front of you, but, and Mark Klbrman, I think, the Boro Planner have the letter that this is in compliance, and we'll take some questions. As far as the specifics, the plans, I think this is all we, we can share right now.
Mark, just because we have some new members who may have or may not have been on capital improvement projects in the past, can you just let us know where our role is and what kind of questions we can ask?
Hello?
Yeah, you are.
All right, so the municipal land use law has a provision for what we call a courtesy review. It's 40.55D-31, and I'll read the relevant part of it. Whenever the planning board shall have adopted any portion of the master plan, the governing body or other public agency having jurisdiction over the subject matter before taking action, necessitating the expenditure of any public funds. Incidental to the location, character, or extent of such project shall refer the action involving such specific project to the planning board for, this is the key, review and recommendation in conjunction with such master plan, and shall not act thereon without such recommendation or until 45 days have elapsed after such reference without receiving such recommendation. The next section of the statute talks about how this applies to housing authorities, parking authorities, school districts, redevelopment agencies, et cetera, includes municipality, county, any public agency. So the idea is just that this is an opportunity for people that are educated on planning matters in the local community can weigh in and offer recommendations. You don't get to tell the governing body what they can or can't do, they have power of zoning, they are elected to make those decisions. The same applies with the school board, if a school decides it's putting on a mission, they're putting on a mission. But they do have to come to you for input, because sometimes, planning board members know things that other people don't. And I've seen sometimes, plans get improved through this process. This is pretty vanilla, this is an existing field, it's going to be an existing field afterwards, that, that's the process. Hopefully, everybody understands that.
It said they come to us before spending public funds, does that include any work on the site? Should be, it should, it should happen after they come for capital review, correct?
Right, so that's the idea, and I think there, there may be two instances in Hillsdale right now where things have gotten a little bit out of whack, like work has started before this process has happened. There's something happening with the school board right now that I had to be announced today about. That I'm not, that there may have actually been a review like six years ago for that project, we're just not sure. But the, there's no enforcement mechanism in the law, like, okay, what are you going to do about it? The planning board's not going to sue the governing body because they went out of order, that would just be silly.
But I think it's important to correct that the governing body knows what the process is legally, that the, that they do have to have a capital review and take feedback before work is done and projects are announced. Because this is the first time I've been here in 13 years that the order, that has not been followed.
Yeah, I mean.
It's starting to happen, so.
You may have had a great idea to improve the project, but it's too late because they started the work around, so, yeah.
And it's not typical.
No, it's, it's tactically illegal.
It's, that's the point I want to make, okay, thank you. Okay, so professionals, Chris, your input is going to be very valuable, you've known this town forever, so what do you think of the plans?
Well, a couple things there. I think we're going to worry about, we got more of those parts along areas where, I believe, it was dugouts, yes? Okay, you have a few of the parents or parents with kids running around screaming, jumping in the car, long distance in the car, puts it in drive, and drives over the bench where kids are sitting. So what I would do, all my projects I need to do is put a barrier there. I'm careful, rocks, poles, guy rail, something to protect the people on the field from the people who are corners. It's inherently, you've seen the horror stories, some of the sort of playgrounds where they're built, you want to set whoever or something, and after reveal, years ago, I just be careful, if she got into the parking area, like, it's pretty similar to, if they've started project making, certainly all that, it would, whatever you've got, income taxes. That's, secondly, I assume there are high-mast sports lighting here?
No.
There's no sport, I see these, there's no sports lighting?
No.
Okay.
So there was, there was pathway lighting originally, and so it's what we actually have since reduced the pathway lighting due to budget concerns, so there's, there's going to be lighting in the parking lot and in the ADA ramp that accesses down by the grass neighbors, that's it.
So now there's more to it? So the parking lots now, maybe?
The parking lot is there?
So they just pass the use. That's definitely more than the public know that, you know, it's not high mast.
Chris, can you say that again, I'm just trying to get it?
There's no high mast sports lighting.
Okay.
That's usually a concern.
But that may be put in at some point, but we can't comment on that now. The plan is, I think, to put some in eventually.
That would be a more chapter, so when the issues come back to the board.
It would be, they would have, they would have to come back to the board when that happens.
Just for captain's.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other than that, if you're meeting with lots of short-term announcement, then that's not, sure, the county's, that's, that's. In my experience with the water field, we've got all the problems with dams, everything is broken. So, yeah, do you guys, do you touch receptacles all over the place, yeah, it's fine, you're gonna find them pieces, something else.
There's going to be some events all over.
Maybe, right, come back with the slush up the shop.
Yep.
So you can put your receptacles in a box, maybe, just let out, I mean, not like that, just, you know, once the wires are exposed, it's, that's, that's. Then also protecting the fencing, right?
Correct.
Kids can, I mean, make sure that. A winch, a winch mesh.
Right now, we have a chain link fence.
Chain length, it's too much, they can't do much fence, that's, that's, so, if you can't do something, correct? Those kids with high fences and, and out walls, so just. Pretty much, yeah, that's it.
All right, let me make sure I got this, one, ensure surveillance cameras are operational and protected, two, use non-climbable chain length fencing, three, bollards or other crash protection around which areas?
Any, any adjacent with parking lots against where students or children may be. There's a document, there's a, there's.
Any, any adjacent parking spots to pedestrian areas?
So I put a bollard or other crash protection around parking lots where visitors may gather?
Thank you, Chris, Tom?
Can I clarify something?
Yeah.
Sorry, so we do capital projects all the time, we do five to 10 projects every year. Paving roads is a capital project, does this mean every time we want to pave roads as part of a capital project, we're spending money, we have to come here?
It's a really good question.
Actually, the answer is yes, generally, generally, most of the boards aren't necessarily just getting service and projects. Any extent, sure, capital finds, by the governing bodies, mostly to.
Yeah, I mean, if you read the statute, literally, that's what it says, but I've been doing this for over 25 years and I've never seen a road paving project come before a planning board.
Is the distinction perhaps where there's a significant change, meaning if you're repaving a road that exists, you're not really.
Well, if you read the statute, the statute says.
And there's no minimum?
Yep, well, any action necessitating the expenditure of public funds.
We're putting plants outside right now as a, as part of a capital project.
Yeah.
It makes us focus on the matter again, rather.
Yeah, I just, he asked a question, so I think we're answering the question.
We should ask Mark McDavid to do some research on this.
We just want to do the right thing.
Yeah, thank you.
We did Centennial Field as a.
I know the person who can clarify this easily, so we'll get you the answer.
Okay. Right, but I don't want to be accused that we're doing something without coming to the board, if it's a capital project, we have to come, we will, we will be here every meeting, which, which is fine.
I think, I think Mike, you can use your discretion, or something, why is the, the.
Right, okay, oh, okay.
Thank you for that inquiry, Tom, anything you want to add?
No technical comments or expressions, no field lighting, you know, so beyond that, sometimes the board won't offer recommendations for how to deal with, like, views, restrictions, etc., pretty self-explanatory, it's an existing field. You know, you're really, I think, going to modify it, modernize it in a way that the use almost exactly the same to accommodate, you know, promotion, youth sports that are, you know, now happening year-round, they're all sports, et cetera. Obviously, there's a need to, to do this because there's no delay and every town's kind of facing.
Any new traffic concerns that you would see?
Planner, I mean, it's, they provide 79 parking spaces, the access is provided solely on Hillsdale Avenue, so presumably that, that makes sense, I think, if you have the emergency access, which goes by the fieldhouse. Beyond that, sometimes we'll have a sort of look back when this work is done, because it's surrounded by residential properties, just to see if they, or the town, or the town, maybe, and see if there's a way to minimize those impacts, so sometimes it might be something, you know, something reasonable that if there's a hole, if there's lighting, again, I know we're not talking about lighting or that type.
Any screening or buffers we can do?
Trees, right, and this could be a, I don't know if there's a landscape plan or a, I don't.
There is, okay.
So I haven't seen that, so.
Yeah, where, why didn't we see the landscaping plan?
It's included in the plan, so.
I didn't.
I will tell you in a second, it is sheet.
There were emails. Oh, in the email, yeah.
Oh, you not get the full plans that print? Oh, we, we gave 15 sets, I felt that.
So I had the 15 sets I gave you, and then you give it back to me.
Chris said he printed them, so I gave them back to him, it's.
I have them in my office if you want.
But it is, it is sheet eight, that's what I said.
Okay, we can look it up.
Qualified professional prepared a landscape plan, and then once it's done, you see if it's worth supplementing for.
Yeah, do you remember, Chris, looking at it, does it seem sufficient, or do you think it needs supplementation?
I, I'm looking at the rest of the plans, yeah, sorry, I didn't answer your.
Okay, well, work and take a look at that.
I got a question on the field, um, you're going from grass to artificial turf.
Mm-hmm.
You guys saw the SES power, right?
Yeah.
Okay, they didn't even worry about that was, they maybe put, literally, I had to detain the entire field underneath the field. So, good luck with, was it SES, I did it up there.
Can you explain that again, Chris, what you had to do?
Because you're going from.
Natural, artificial, again.
Natural, then obviously you get, there's a difference in getting that runoff.
Yes.
So, like, so Conservation Service in Royal Canyon, they do a river belt was, underneath the field, you have about two-foot stone, which was, and then there's a huge amount of clam shells, basically detention, and then I said, how the controls, our shells, and whatnot.
We have a similar disaster.
I know, it's, I don't.
It's, we have, we have a, we have a herringbone kind of pattern of a perforated pipe with, with the, the storm tech chambers. There's some, there's a large number of them under the field, and there's a bunch of them in the parking lot as well.
Is it still pivot that you're using the?
Yes, correct.
Start construction without.
The only thing that's happened so far is, is site clearing from DPW, the contractors not being on any work there, just DPW started removing some of the fence to crap.
Maybe they'll attend now sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Chris, so open to, yeah, Tom?
I'm just saying, that's the plan-wise, that's.
Yes, yes.
Boro's exempt from zoning, it's, it's a Boro-owned property. Regardless, there are things on all the parks and playgrounds, communities, that's a lot of it, just give it the full flavor. Charlie Green from college prepared a memo which addressed development master plan provisions, I don't disagree with anything that you wrote in the master plan, but I put it this way, I didn't identify anything that would be inconsistent with the master plan, it's really sort of a test. If anything, there are provisions on the master plan that support the renovation of the park. The board recalls, we did a community survey in 2022 to gauge the interest on the number of capital improvements that the town might like to see, and this was one that gave up.
Neighbors had a lot of concerns about the intensity of use and time, so I think what you said about screening is really important.
Screening and the lack of one, so if you're really restricted by daylight hours.
So it could be different if lights come back, we'd have to talk about that in terms of the master plan, another.
I agree, that would be subsequent conversation for it. The other recommendation that I've seen in other places is just that, you know, the Boro residents, and not open enough to, you know, people who don't know what it is.
Yeah, you can't do that with public funds, right?
Some towns do that, Upper Saddle River has signs all on.
Organizations, or even, sometimes there'll be other towns that own that field, and my point is that you might call for that recommendation, that's probably what they're going to do anyway, but, I know it's sort of a leaving a concerted neighbor sometimes when you state that.
That's the plan, it's.
Okay, Mr., you Stark, you want to ask anything?
You guys, I had a question about where was the playground area going to be, you answered that in your presentation. I guess a recommendation that I would have is that the playground actually not be located here. Instead of actually located in Beachwood, where there's an existing playground, let's say it's a lot of activity, I don't know if my kid play on it, but it can, you know, be refreshed, be renewed, it's a better location, I think, with the shade. We made reference to the 2022 master plan, and Beachwood had a higher return of people wanting improvements there. It was like 25%, and Memorial Field was 11%, so I agree that this is not inconsistent with the master plan, but I think that's a recommendation I should be considering for the playground space. I think this is a big improvement to the field, but we can share the improvements amongst the other parks.
Just to that point, we always, we always put small part down with the long development because while in certain cases, certain Asian playing here, there's brothers and sisters, the parents who are here as well.
That's exactly what.
So I think, I think, future markets help too, I don't, don't give you off, that's your open space applications.
I just, I, you go to River Vale, you go to, like, I don't know, it's Mark Lane, and you have kids playing that field, and you can't play on that playground in summertime, because it's a million. and you can't play on that playground in summertime, because it's a million degrees. I think that could be the case here. There's no shade, we don't, it's, say, land, maybe you come back and it's going to have shade and that, so then we'll consider that, but, um, I think there's a, there's an opportunity to, uh, to improve it with something that is very, uh, available.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Stop, are you ready?
I understand there existing fields, I guess, is, what are the main differences in terms of the enhancement work that's being done? Are any additional fields being added? Are the fields larger, smaller?
It's bigger, it's larger, so we are combining two fields into one, and there'll be multi-use.
Okay.
Uh, the two basketball courts stay the same. We're adding the picnic area, and we're adding, uh, the playground, uh, in, we're working on the inside of the, of the house, of the, of the fieldhouse, just to make it better. But that, and, and, at, uh, the parking, about 40 more spots.
Those are the most significant differences.
That's all. Well, the significance is going from national to turf. That's the major difference. There's what?
Ice.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully not.
It is actually, I don't know how to. I don't have any additional questions.
Okay, Mr. Em.
Thank you, Meredith. I don't know if you called on me, did you?
Yeah.
I want to make sure.
It's that grandpa hearing.
Grandpa hearing. So I just have a couple of questions, uh, to say the, uh, let's get my bearing straight, uh, west, the west, uh, southwest side, so that parking lot is now eliminated, or is that still going to be parking?
It's eliminated.
Eliminated, and so I see a lot of single gate, what, what is the, what I'm looking at in the plan? What is all of what I'm looking at on the southwest, southwest corner?
That's the emergency access drive, so.
So I see the driveway just a little bit east of that.
Oh, that's an ADA access, right? Like a sidewalk.
No, some of the stone, the stone hatch area above the basketball court.
Or the playground.
Then that's, then the playground.
So that's the new playground area is the playground, okay. Um, so the basketball court's going to stay the same, the field is going to enlarge, yeah. Uh, and the parking, is there any access to the fieldhouse other than the new parking area along, I guess that's what the, uh, the north side, so we come in from Hillsdale Avenue, and we have parking along Hillsdale Avenue, and then heading south to the new clubhouse, is that correct? So there's no access from the south, you're only coming in?
No direct access except for emergency vehicles, where we have those grass papers.
Okay. Um, and the ballards, I think Chris mentioned the ballards, I think that's, if we're going to put in ballards or boulders, I think that's really important to protect, not only the playground, uh, I don't know if Chris mentioned that, to prevent any cars from maybe entering the emergency access area, just preventing the kids from playing, but also all of the parking areas along Hillsdale Avenue and along the western side. Um, I think that's really important. Uh, the chain link fence Chris had mentioned, I think that's really important as well. Um, and the buffer, I didn't see the landscape plan, but the neighbors to the east, um, are there, is there going to be any buffer, any evergreens, any trees that are going to be provided to, to, to buffer the, um, I guess, the play area from the, the neighboring houses?
So the, the area to the east is kind of going to remain as it was before. There, there was some trees there before, those trees are all going to remain. Um, we haven't supplied any supplemental landscaping in that area.
Is there any reason why you haven't done that?
It's the way, it's the way it always has been on the eastern end.
Okay, and the trees, there's a few coming down there, I see?
Uh, not on, on the eastern end, I don't believe so. Uh, there's, there's three, but those are really more along Washington Avenue, not along that, that border.
Yeah, describing that wrong, this. So nothing along the east, so the neighboring property is going to remain the same with no buffering from this field?
Correct, but the east remains more or less the same in terms of, of existing trees. It's really when you get to the south and start wrapping around the west side that there's some tree removal.
Suggestion, this side, suggestion would be on the, just a suggestion on the east side of the property, uh, to buffer, to buffer the neighboring houses along the east side, I would suggest some.
Recommendation?
Re, just a recommendation. Evergreen, some type of evergreen covering, uh, to, to buffer the neighboring properties now that you're building all this from the field, suggestion. Um, the hours of the field, has that been determined yet? There's no lighting?
No, not yet.
It hasn't been determined, no. Okay, is it going to be similar to what's there now?
Yeah, it's going to, it'll, you know, depend on the, on the daylight, uh, basically, and.
Nothing at nighttime? There, there's no activity at nighttime?
Nothing at night, there's no lights.
Okay. I think I'm good for now, I might have another question, so after, where's putting?
Okay, thank you. Ed?
Thank you very much.
So there's no lighting?
No lighting.
What are you putting in, the electric, the tiny ones in future?
For the future, we, we will have.
There's conduit, yeah, so the.
And they need.
The, the conduit serves a couple of purposes. One, we're looking at it potentially for the camera surveillance system, because we're not exactly sure where we're locating those cameras yet.
You don't have a surveillance system?
There, there is a camera surveillance system going in, we just haven't, it hasn't been fully designed, so it's still kind of to be determined. Uh, we also have the potential for putting pathway lights in the future to light the pathway, not that, not, I'm not talking about sports lighting, I'm just talking about pathway lights for the walking path that surrounds the perimeter of the field. And that conduit also could, in theory, be used for sports lights if the town wanted to go in that direction if people.
So I haven't seen any stormwater management plan, is there one that exists?
Yes.
You know, I feel kind of a little left out in getting this plan right before the meeting and having to look at it and make some decisions. And I'm not quite sure I can say this is consistent or not consistent without seeing some of the other work that went into this, lighting plan, if there is one, the conduit plan, certainly stormwater management.
It's, it's a full comprehensive plan set, so it has all those components.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Liebman, I'm sorry, Mr. Liebman, if you just remind the board what the jurisdiction is.
Yeah, I mean, we.
Ed, if you want to look, I know it's hard to see my computer, but we were emailed all that, and you, I have a computer here if you want to study it for a while, I know it's hard to see it that way.
I have paper copies too that we gave that we, that we've been back to us, what?
It's just whatever recommendations you may have, tell me what your recommendations are, I'm going to type them into the letter, we're going to send them out.
I think Ed is saying he may have some stormwater recommendations, but he doesn't know because he can't see them.
Well, now is the time to, I mean, what, the recommendation is what, that it comply with the DEP stormwater regulations? Is that, is that the recommendation, Ed?
Storm Conservation Service is going to view it more that, because there's no DEP car involved here, so Storm Conservation Service will do that. They'll be, you're going to have that, and he, he knows that.
Yeah, we, we have a full stormwater report that shows how it justifies all of it.
I must, what kind of maintenance?
NJDEP stormwater.
What kind of maintenance does the field, the astroturf require?
Very little. Very little maintenance at all. So this, this is a no infill product, so a typical turf field, you're going to have, um, like sweeping of the infill to redistribute it across the field on a periodic basis, that's pretty much the extent of the maintenance.
Does it have to be replaced every 10 years or?
There, there is a, there is a service life, it is more along like 20 years, not 10, but, but yeah, it does, it does have a service life.
Okay, that, that's all I can come up with now without having the documentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rinn.
Um, just basic stuff, the, the pathway, the asphalt pathway is continuous around the whole park, so people can walk around or enjoy the whole thing. Um, the parking lot detail, we're just trying to do, we're trying to say we're doing pervious asphalt, is that what's going on here?
There is typical, like, normal asphalt in the drive aisles, and then.
And then I see a couple of spots that, for some.
Yeah, in, in the, in the, a lot of the parking spaces, we're using pervious pavement, and that's to achieve the TSS removal that's required for the stormwater ring.
So, I mean, just, we've been through that before. Um, basically, once you seal that stuff, it's no longer pervious.
Correct, it's, it requires maintenance, yeah.
Okay, sorry, uh, that's not in our world, that's fine. Um, the biggest red flag I have is there's a sewer man, easeman through this whole field. Um, do we know the, just because we've been through this where anything over 50 years deemed the whole downtown and needed redevelopment, um, has that been inspected?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we, um, we camered the sewer before we started designing this project, we found that it was in very good condition and in no need of, of any kind of replacement. If there was going to be maintenance done on the sewer, likely be lining, lining doesn't require you to dig it up, you can just go manhole to manhole, line the pipe, and, and you're done. And in the event that we did need to dig it up, really, it's not as big of a deal as it seems, you can kind of just cut the turf, peel it back, dig, you know.
I'm realist, I'm.
It's actually easier than, than pulling it up within a parking lot area, so, but, but you're right, it does, it does run down the whole middle of the field, that sewer line.
Um, and then, I guess, just the, the location of the ingress egress to the parking lot from Hillsdale Avenue, being pretty close to, I guess, Holdrum Street directly across, I know that's the overflow parking, it has been.
Yeah.
Do we see, is there a reason, because I could just see that being a stalemate, two stopped cars looking at each other?
The reason is elevation.
Okay.
So, yeah.
There's going to be a lot of retaining wall up towards the.
Correct, there, there is, there's really no other feasible location to put an access drive on that side.
Those are my only questions, thank you.
Sure.
So no recommendations?
No, I have no recommendations.
I put a maintain the pervious.
Yeah.
Thanks, you're included.
Thank you. Dr. Ember?
If I'm premature with my questions, just let me know. Usually I'm.
We have only, we don't have, it's not a normal hearing, so you're good.
We're, we're spending so much money, why aren't we talking about the lighting? And if we're not talking about it and was saying we, we're going to probably put it in later, what Scott said about the buffer, I think, I think it has to be incorporated and thought about before you do the, the construction on the field to protect the neighbors. That's one point.
So you'd like to see buffering now?
Well, somebody, I'd like Chris to talk about the buffering with, with the, or the, the verge system for, to talk about the buffering for the lighting that we might eventually put in. I'm sure, I'm surprised no neighbors are here to complain about lighting, all right?
It wasn't noticed this week.
Right, I understand, uh, so that's the first thing.
There's no lighting though.
No, I understand that, but if we're considering putting it in.
They'll have to come back to us, and.
But I think we have to consider it in your construction now, uh, before you, you put the buffering in.
Uh, the council made the decision not to have lights now. There could be in 10 years when we peel, you know, the carpets.
No, I, I, I believe, I understand.
I think your question is, are there any concern, like, can we preempt that? Is there anything we should be doing, should we start the screening now in, in the case that that happens, like Chris, or?
Yeah, if, if we're going to put some more light in here, the lights would probably be 140.
Right, so there's really no screening you can do?
Like, since, you look, since that area feels a bit, it's very hard to buffer.
Yeah.
Except today's technology, or the, the lighting systems are, they get a lot better to focus on the fields, get a lot less lighting trespass off the field, so, it's, it's, it's.
So if you're here in 10 years, you'll get to comment on lighting.
Uh, second, I think, second point that I, that I just want to talk about, I, I researched, uh, the, the type of field, and, you know, ob- obviously, most of the people are concerned about their kids getting more burns on the astroturf and everything else. And one part of it, and the second part is some of the astroturf leak materials, and I just hope the materials that we're going with uh, alleviate these, these two problems. I would just be concerned about how you do it and what you, what you purchase.
Yeah, that was about a concern a number of years ago, because there were some artificial turf products that did have lead in it, and that's all gone now, there's no more, that's.
But there are other things I've, that I've read that leak out.
Yes.
And, you know, I've spoken to a lot of the podiatrists, and, you know, yes, there are going to be a few more incidents where the kids either, uh, twist their ankles or get burned, and I know you have to consider it, but I don't know what you can do with that.
For the heat, for the heat, also, you can put a misting stations where Sony.
No, when they're rubbing, when they're being tackled or something like that.
Oh, no, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, like burns, like.
Like burns, yeah, okay.
Noted.
Dan? Thank you.
Uh, yeah. So I'm, I'm glad, uh, some questions brought up, and there's a strategy for the drainage, because I know with the existing, uh, field stock, that's one of the concerns, so I'm glad there's a strategy here for that. A lot of my questions were about lighting, so I think a lot of people talked about that. Uh, did you mention that there's, was there lighting for parking?
Yes.
And that's like an overhead, like a?
Yeah, a typical, like, street light for, for parking.
Has there been an, an analysis, has, is any light, uh, going past the property line as a result of those?
No.
Okay. And it, it was that in the supplemental documents that we don't have?
Um, we don't have photometrics in here, I don't think, I'm going to check, I, I don't believe we have, like, a, actual, like, plan that just put candles.
Yeah.
But we did look at it when we were designing it.
Okay.
And it was tested? This village was tested?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I don't see, I don't see the locations listed here, let's just note.
Um, it's, they're, they're small symbols, if you look on the, the site plan, they kind of look like, uh,
Sisbath's?
Little rectangles, it's kind of hard to identify.
Glad you, okay.
If you, if you look at the ADA spaces in the corner over by the emergency access drive, there's, there's one of those rectangles there, and they kind of.
It's, it's the ones, they're, they're sort of on the, the interior side, not.
It's on, it's on the edge of the parking lot area.
Right, closer to the field.
Correct.
Okay. Just about the, the bleachers, I, it looks like there's a couple of locations that don't have bleacher coverage. Uh, so like that field in the southwest, just as we're, I don't see any bleachers that really cover that field. Um, you know, I know there's a playground, it's supposed to be go there, you know, there's, but there's no bleachers really if you're watching that.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's bleachers up by the, by the basketball court, which is meant to cover that, and really, the intention of that field was for the, the softball. Um, the, the rest of the, uh, like, youth play was, was really intended on the, the southeast field.
Mm-hmm.
For, for softball, at least.
Is it, so is there, I see there's a size difference, um, do some, I don't see a material difference, are they all, is it all astroturf?
Correct, the entire footprint is turf.
So there's no dirt mounds and?
No.
Uh, and the material of the basketball court, what's that?
It's a typical asphalt with acrylic.
It's asphalt, okay. Uh, I just didn't see it. And then last, I, um, having just come from, uh, coaching at the big, uh, in the big complex in Westwood, um, they, they do have, uh, a playground there, which I, I do think is, is nice, keeping one child preoccupied, so I, you guys would come back, I guess, when proposing the playground, I suppose?
No.
No, because it's not shown here, that'd be a different budget, right?
So, so we have a donation from a resident that's, that's going to pay for the playground, it's ADA compliant. Uh, so the, so we have the, the platform where they'll go, but, uh, it'll cover 6,000 square feet.
Okay.
And we.
So it wouldn't be public funds?
It's, it's not using public funds, it's donated.
Right.
It's, you donate it. We have, um, the platform, which we're talking about now, but, uh, the actual material, uh, equipment, it's all donated.
Okay.
Is it, this project, essentially, what we're doing is just prepping a pad for it, and, you know, it goes in as a separate thing?
Um, okay, would, would it be like a rubber surface or something, or?
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Uh, no other questions?
Okay, Dan?
Mr. Gasly, is that right?
It's a Gasly?
Yeah, Gasly.
He's so happy at these meetings, not at your meetings.
I know, I have 14 videos to show if you want.
You do have 14 videos, I'm ready to watch them all.
Oh, stop, we're on the air.
I understand, I have a question for you, uh, with respect to the work that's been done so far. Um, it's been done with only DPW employees, is that correct?
That's, that's correct.
And so what's been done, and, and so there's been no, no contract work assigned at all? It's just, so what's been done to date?
So we have the demolition plan, and we agreed with the contractor on what we will do, our own, on, on our own to save money.
Okay.
With our own DPW, some temporary labor and equipment. So, we're moving the rocks, the boulders, the fence. We moved the bleachers to save them, so we moved three of them to Beechwood. And we kept the smaller ones, so when we have events in, in this park, we can move them there as a stage. But that's the majority of the work. We didn't, we didn't disturb any groundwork or anything like that yet.
Okay.
So, you didn't really break ground?
So, well, we brought that aside, right? So, but the fencing is being, I thought, our superintendent said that it was being pushed off to one side and preserved. Is that the case or is that not the case?
No.
No?
Yeah. I mean, unless Barry saves some of the fence, but from what I'm, from, I, I think it's just...
It was just taken away. Okay, okay.
Thank you. Janara?
I actually have just a quick question to commit on the plan for the playground. What is, are you preparing that with?
Just scum.
So...
Literally just, just like gravel essentially?
Gravel, but then as the playground gets finished further, is someone else going to finish it further?
Correct, yeah.
Because you're not supposed to be in access.
We're not, we're not going to leave it as gravel.
Nobody's supposed to be in access for all type of playground, so wheelchairs have to go on it.
Yep.
It can't be gravel or any type of chips or wood, so we know that, right?
We, we, we are thinking it'll likely be one of the, the rubber.
The rubber type of, that we can hold wheels on. Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, board, any, yes, I do.
Can I make a recommendation that if you do, in fact, in the future, decide to do lighting, that you come before the board? In support of the residents around there, I'm just concerned that there's no lighting now, so it's easy to get this through. And six months, a year from now, you come back and say, yeah, we're going to have lighting, and we need lighting. I just want to make a recommendation that you come out before.
Duly noted, and that's the only way we would do it. We have, we've had six public meetings on this. We had full room here, standing room only, and the residents spoke loud and clear. They don't want lights, some wanted lights, some no lights. The final decision was no lights. I don't see the governing body making a decision overnight with lights without a public hearing again. So, I agree with you, but that's the only way that we should do it.
All right. Thanks.
I just have one more question. The, the conduits you're putting in for the lights, like Ed was just speaking about, the conduits will be installed with the field?
Correct.
In preparation for lighting in the future, if just happens?
Flexibility, so we don't have to excavate.
And the west side of the property, it's a big slope there. I see a retaining wall. Can you tell me first how high the retaining wall is on the west side of the property, the new retaining wall? And the slope that's there now, is there going to be any installation of buffering, planting, any rehab of that area, which slopes down? I think that's Holdrum, Hopper, Hopper Street down to the field?
The, the majority of the landscaping that we have proposed for the whole site is in that area.
Okay.
Particularly because that is the area where we have the most room in the, on the other side. There's not quite a lot of room between the retaining wall and the street, so we don't want to plant, like, trees, for example, have roots interfering with the retaining wall system.
Are you talking about the west side?
I'm talking on the south side where we, we had issues with landscaping. Because, yeah, the, the root system interferes with the retaining wall.
But going back to the recommendation I had with, that's going to be the east side. The recommendation is for a buffer, some type of evergreen planting to shield the residents' homes along the west, sorry, the east side from the field. I think that's really important. That's a recommendation. But again, going along the hills from Hopper Street to the field is a pretty intense slope. And again, just talk, recommendation or a comment, can you just speak about the rehab of that area? Is that going to be, is everything going to be removed? Are trees going to be removed? Is installation of new planting going to be in that area as well?
So, there, there may be some trees removed. I don't have an exact quantity because we didn't actually identify individual trees on the survey.
Okay.
So, I can't, I can't say, you know, there's exactly six trees coming out because honestly, I don't know. I will say the wall at the corner there is, is, what are we, probably, 13 feet high, 12 feet high?
Northwest?
Yeah, the northwest corner.
How high is that?
About 12 feet.
12 feet. Is it going to be staggered or is it going to be a straight wall?
The, the wall is actually still being designed, but it, it will likely be stepped. Yeah.
Okay. Six and six or?
I, I'm not sure yet, honestly, because the, the contractor's actually taking responsibility for designing that wall.
Okay.
So, it's, it's still kind of in place of what that's going to like, look like in a, in a final form. But that area in terms of disruption, we're probably looking at 10 or 15 feet behind the wall where there's going to be excavation outside of that.
It's going to remain the same then?
Correct.
Just trees and leaves and?
Yeah, outside of, you know, beyond, I would say beyond 20 feet behind the wall, there should be no disruption there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I incorporated my suggestions already into the EC report, which didn't go that way. But thank you for putting pivot in at least. Scott, do you, would you, would you be open to the EC subcommittee maybe meeting about the buffering and plantings on site? Like, we sometimes do that for applications?
Of course, absolutely. Whether it's, you know, a west side, I think we maybe can incorporate something a little bit more decorative along, because it looks like a separate area that should be involved with, if you're doing all this work, and then to the west side, you're just leaving that area above that 12-foot wall. My, my suggestion is we should try to incorporate something a little bit, use the word nicer, better, improve the area. And then along the south, along the east side as well, I know you have some buffering along the south side, but I think along the east side. So, if the answer is yes, Meredith, I'd be more than happy to help in any way.
Yes, that'd be my recommendation, that EC subcommittee meets about landscaping.
So, it's the EC subcommittee should be consulted regarding...
Regarding landscaping.
Plantings on the site.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing a beautiful job out here.
Beautiful. I have to say, I have to thank the subcommittee, you know, between Tracy, Scott.
This town's going to look completely different.
Very helpful.
Okay. I know legally, we don't have to open to the public or something.
Just regarding the wall, if it's going to be a gravity wall with singles, single stack, which it might be, because you said that the contractor's in charge of the design?
Yeah.
It's delineated as a single stack wall right now.
It's a modular block retaining wall with, with the GeoGrid tieback.
Yeah, as long as it has an aesthetic face, you know, we don't want to have someone coming with the concrete detail and just have...
Oh, no.
And then obviously fencing along all safety features for the top level. But that's, I think that's just me, the other eight, that you already had planned. But yeah, aesthetically, my recommendation is keep it pretty with a stone texture face or whatever.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I know technically we don't have to open to the public, but being that Mr. Savino's sitting through this entire night, if you'd like to cut you off. What? I, I mean, I cut you off? That was Michael this time.
That's the longest one for...
Do you want to come up and ask any questions? You can come up and ask questions. I don't think you can give suggestions, but you can ask questions.
You, you, I think everyone's has brought up what I was leading to at the beginning of the meeting. I look at this as an incomplete application. There is no, there's, there's a drainage plan referred into. You've asked for it, you know, but it's not there. I think the public needs to see these things. A lighting plan, that's referred to on this one page. Where is it? The landscaping, the elevations, the retaining wall, trees being removed? I think there's some very substantial trees along Holdrum. None of that is in this application. I don't think you, anything can be done with this without a more complete presentation, and the public needs to know.
So, this is not an application?
Yeah.
This is just a review and recommendation?
Well, and I'm a member of the public. It's not my decision to decide, is this a complete application?
You can give a comment that, that even though it's not legally required, it would have been nice, it would have been nice to be able to see it, even though they're not required to show it to you.
But going to the crux of the matter, the planner's report that was published is conclusory. The master plan, really, I think there's an emphasis for all of our parks, playgrounds, youth, young kids, older kids, adults. And we're putting $5.8 million into football and baseball at one park. We have a lot of, we have a lot of other parks that need work, and I don't, frankly, I don't think that's compliance with our master plan. That's a decision you guys have to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we did have a recommendation about potentially moving the playground to another park, which would be updating another park. And I like that you checked the survey that we do with the master plan. I was quite impressed, so. Okay, do you want to run down our recommendations so we can hear them?
The recommendations are, one, ensure surveillance cameras are operational and protected. Two, use non-climbable chain link fence. Three, consider a new location for a playground. Four, follards or other crash protection around parking lots where visitors may gather, e.g., play areas. Five, the board recommends that other parks be considered for improvement. Six, comply with New Jersey DEP stormwater regulations. Seven, maintain the pervious papers. Eight, if lighting is installed in the future, the council should make this known to the public. Nine, the EC subcommittee should be consulted regarding plantings on the site. Ten, use stone textured materials on retaining walls.
Lawrence, does that sound correct? Yes.
It could be installed shading, like the canopy kind of systems?
Something, yeah.
Yeah, I got it. I think Mark Lane has that, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know. I'm not trying to embarrass the room, but whatever.
Westvale has to be pretty deep.
But be natural nor...
Tom, can I ask you a question? Based on what Mr. Savino said, is there any interpretation of the master plan that would say if a lot of funds and resources are going to one park, that that could be interpreted as a detriment to the other, can, other parts of the town?
I don't think it prevents you from improving those other parks. That's not sort of mutually exclusive.
Well, that, you're assuming that it's not mutually exclusive, right?
Well...
Yeah.
I don't know that the status or the conditions are the other part of the...
Right, right.
...to do with their function, function, and the town has decided to put their funds toward this, and that some of the people put funds for those other parks as they become available. I'm not sure it rises to the level of being...
So, is it okay to ask the BA, this project is not going to preclude future parks in being improved as they need? Is there a plan to address that as well?
We actually do, and we have, you know, done already. Centennial Field was done as part, you know, same project. We're doing this project. We're working on the bench shell at Beechwood. We're working, we're actually put $300,000 to spend on Beechwood Field, the field itself. So, yes, the answer is yes.
I'd also like emphasize that trails are part of the master plan and that the trail does not keep falling through the cracks for years and years and years and years, because that's a big, a big concern of residents as well.
Yes.
As we're upgrading, upgrading these fields. Is this the only field you foresee artificial turf for in Hillsdale?
For the foreseeable future, I say yes, just because of the cost.
So, what would be if you have your dream plan, where else would we turf?
I think Beechwood.
You would turf Beechwood?
Definitely. Beechwood has a lot of potential there.
Okay, well...
That, that whole park area has a big potential.
I would just like to note that that's a decision for the mayor and council and not for the BA's.
Yeah, I, I was thinking you were speaking on behalf of what you've heard of the mayor and council, not your own opinion.
No, I make a recommendation to the mayor and council, and then they decide. But if I was to make a recommendation, that would be the next one.
Okay, I meant more, are there plans to turf other fields, like in the future? Okay.
No, and I think, you know, not speaking for anyone on the council or, or the mayor himself, but I think you need to start somewhere. And I know Centennial is done, but this is really going to be a fixture for the...
You're the one who was fairly concerned about artificial turf.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm happy we got rid of it at Centennial when the last PA was in front of us, and that was a good time.
Yeah.
It was a good time.
You were talking about the other towns that are...
I, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I understand you need a field that can go through the trials of daily use from kids and not get ruined, and then especially during rainy season. Having one...
I think the master plan does talk about maintaining a balance, so we want to have a very, you know, active usable field, and we want passive areas. And I just think, yeah, we, so we want to turf the whole season.
The high schools are already turfed as well, and technically, that's a field in the borough, and our kids do use it. And I think it's, it's a good step to turn the town around, instead of having a lot of crappy parks, we used to have a few. And one really good one, I don't know. But I think it's a good step. I really do. It's something that has been in the rears for a while, and it's something to start with.
Some of these kids are playing soccer.
It's more lacrosse, but whatever.
Okay, thank you. Any board, anyone else? Okay, so Mark, can you help us know where, precisely where we are?
Somebody should make a motion to directly, to send a letter to the governing body, outlining the recommendations that I just read.
Do you think the vote on that being what our recommendations are?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion to direct Mark to prepare a letter to the governing body with the board's recommendations for this project?
Motion.
Dan Freeman, second. Mr. Reardon?
Sorry, who was the second?
Reardon.
Chairman Cates?
Yes.
Vice Chair Reardon?
Yes.
Secretary Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Alter?
Yes.
Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mr. Greed?
Yes.
Dr. Weber?
Yes.
Councilor Lee is interning you. Do I vote or stay?
You vote.
Vote.
Yes. Mayor Shankin?
I'm abstaining.
You're supposed to vote. You can vote as a board member.
Well, it's coming, I'm asking you, would you please send me a letter?
I think we can still send a letter.
Okay, send me a letter. Yes.
Because you're serving in your planning capacity. Yes. Okay. Is that it?
Motion to pass.
Thank you.
All right. I just sent you the law.
Okay. So, that's it then. Thank you, Mr. Gasly. Thank you, professionals and members of the council that were here. Thank you for your work on this. We appreciate you.
Most enjoyed.
Okay, so I have no other items, but I'll open to the public. Is there anyone who wants to approach the board, Rick, on, on any other matter? Seeing that, I'll close the meeting to the public. Our next meeting is November 13th. We think at 7:30, we'll talk to, if we need to try to push earlier due to the hearings, we'll let you guys know, but we'll try not to do that. Okay? I know you can, but we, we wouldn't do that here early. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thank you. Second. Thank you, everyone.